Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chair Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman? Mr. DeRouge?
Here.
Ms. Lopera?
Present.
Ms. Mercer? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
We do have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. For those of you joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you may find tonight's meeting documents posted on the committee's webpage, under the October 6th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they're finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, you will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions? And that's final.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening to everyone. My name is Juan Bernal, distinguished guest. I am the Spanish interpreter assigned to provide consecutive interpretation for Spanish-speaking school committee member Ms. Rafaela Polanco Garcia, while the other two Spanish interpreters, Mr. Dominguez and Ms. Barreto, will provide simultaneous interpretation throughout the event. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el intérprete para español. Parte el equipo de intérpretes. Para accesar el icono de la interpretación, busquen en la parte inferior de sus pantallas el globo y seleccionen el idioma español como su idioma de preferencia. De igual manera, si se están conectando de un teléfono celular, de una tableta o de una iPad, busquen los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior de la pantalla donde dice More, Language Interpretation, y seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. The next interpreter may proceed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Muy buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Randor Domínguez. Voy a ser su intérprete simultáneo del idioma español. Voy a estar trabajando en conjunto con mis colegas Juan Bernal y Luz Barreto. Muchas gracias.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Luz Barreto y estaré trabajando con Randor y con Juan interpretándoles en español. Gracias. Buenas noches. Good night.
Thank you. Well, Haitian Creole interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sergio Centilero, Haitian Creole interpreter. No, très content, je t'ai appris ensemble. C'est moyen avec Nadez, capable de travailler après-midi. Nous sommes très contents pour nous tous et toute sa côte à l'épouter, toutes les questions que vous pouvez poser. Ouais, capable pour faire et nous mêmes, notre travail pour ouais, comment tu l'as dit, c'est maintenant, ouais, pour être dans un bail, comme là, on le gloupe. Ouais, clics sur lui, ouais, capable, entrée là-dedans, suggère une participation par ça, où tu as besoin de dire, ouais, capable de faire. Et nous sommes très contents pour nous avoir et nous souhaitions bonne écoute. Merci beaucoup.
Bonsoir, non, c'est Nadez. C'est un plaisir pour me faire interprétation pour nous à soi. Donc comme ça, je fais de nous là, si nous avons des questions, pas oublier de taper notre chat. Et moi espérais que nous va porter un bon service pour nous. Merci et nous souhaitons une bonne écoute.
Thank you. Well, Cabo Variano interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Variano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Buen tardio. Mi nombre es Joseani. Juntamente con Armando, sabéis ser nos intérpretes simultáneos, pues notely. Para que os tengas acceso a interpretación simultánea, luego que fique disponible, os clican en la icona de globo en la parte inferior del ecran, en el punto dito, y selecciona Cabo Verdiano. Obrigada. Buena noche. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Armando Montero. I'm gonna be your Creole interpreter simultaneous for tonight. Buena noche. Mi nombre es Armando Montero. También soy el intérprete de Creole, Cabo Verdiano, y simultáneo. Thank you. Thank you. Obrigado.
Thank you. Well, Cantonese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Anna and Terry and I will be your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting tonight. 大家好，我是安娜。我今晚会为你提供广东话同个翻译服务。亦都會成功轉咗廣東話嘅翻譯頻道噶啦。唔該曬。Your turn, Terry.
Thank you, Anna. Hi, everyone. My name is Terry. I'll be your interpreter for tonight.
Thank you. Well, our Mandarin interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wei. Tina and I will be your Mandarin interpreters tonight.
Hello, this is Tina. I will be Wei's partner for tonight.
Thank you. Well, our Vietnamese interpreters, please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
Good evening. My name is Yuan Triu. I'm Vietnamese interpreter for tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vi. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Well, our American Sign Language interpretation interpreters, please introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Lucy and I will be your ASL interpreter for this evening. Good evening, Dee. I will also be interpreting this evening.
Hi, my name is Lou. Lucille. Lou. I'm the third ASL interpreter for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. And thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provides support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for the public comment. Public sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. I want to start off by recognizing that October is BPS College Pride Month. And I'm happy to say that several of our members have put their college insignia on their backgrounds and would love to have you take a moment to quickly introduce yourself in your college. And we'll move forward and hopefully other members will be able to also talk about their colleges at our next meeting. So Ms. Lopera, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the privilege of attending Boston College for undergrad and it was an incredible experience. And I attribute a lot of my community service and dedicating my professional career to a lot of the pieces that I learned being at Boston College. So excited and proud Eagle for sure.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yo, me siento muy honrada de haber estudiado en la Pontificia Universidad Católica Madre y Maestra. La Pontificia Universidad Católica Madre y Maestra es una universidad católica y es una universidad de la cual me siento muy orgullosa. Hice diplomado y mi maestría también en la universidad.
I had the privilege of studying at the Pontificia Universidad Católica de la República Dominicana. I had the honor of receiving a diploma. As a matter of fact, I did receive my master's as well there.
Recuerdo algo chistoso que me pasó y quiero compartir con ustedes bien rápido. El día de mi examen de mi maestría, cuando llegué al panel que me iba a examinar, llegaron tres jueces en el panel de examinación. Llegaron tres jueces de la Suprema Corte de Justicia de mi país para mi examen.
So I want to recall something interesting, something funny actually that happened when I was going to be examined, when I was taking my master's degree before getting the degree. Actually, all of a sudden, three judges appeared from the Supreme Justice Court to the panel when I was there.
Y algo bien curioso que me pasó es que ellos cuando llegan, mi idioma es español, pero el derecho en República Dominicana, heredado de Francia, y ellos llegaron los tres saludándose en francés. Y yo me dije a mí misma, estás muerta aquí mismo.
So it was very interesting. It was very interesting because actually the law that applies, it is the French law, the French that basically it is given there. So I was very concerned because they were speaking in French and actually, well, everything was taught in Spanish, but law is regulated by the law French, of course.
Pero mi cualificación fue A y mi tesis fue una de las escogidas, mi tesis de grado fue una de las tesis escogidas para estar en la biblioteca de la Universidad Pucamayma, lo cual me llena de mucho orgullo.
I have to say, I am very proud. I did get an A as the great. And my thesis, my capstone project was selected to be in the library at the University of the Pucamayma University, which I'm very proud about that.
We take it up.
And thank you very much.
Wonderful. I know many of our other members do not have backgrounds, but I would like to give them a moment if they'd like to introduce themselves and their alma mater this time. So I'll start with Mr. DeRouge.
Sure. Actually, Ms. Palanco Garcia, I just started learning the history of the Dominican Republic and I didn't know that the French code applied there, so very interesting. I went to Harvard College. I had the privilege to go there. I really enjoyed my time there. I wanted to go there since I was like 10 years old. And so I was happy to make it and also enjoy. I have made lifelong friends that we meet every Sunday night by Zoom now on all different walks of life and backgrounds. So yeah, very much enjoyed my experience there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman?
Well, I didn't, I'm sorry. Sorry you didn't recognize my background. That's Williams College in northwest Massachusetts in the fall at this time of year. I got my bachelor's, I got my master's at University of Vermont, my doctorate at Stanford University.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, like Ms. Lopera, I am very proud to be a Boston College Eagle and like Ms. Lopera, I attribute a lot of my time and focus on community service from what I learned from the Jesuits of service to others and to whom much is given, much is expected. I'm also very proud to receive a Master's in Business Administration from Babson College. So unfortunately, I'm not as advanced as Ms. Lopera is and Ms. Palanco Garcia and Dr. Coleman to have a proper background on my screen. So Ms. Lopera, I'd appreciate the tips later on on how I could correct it and have the same background.
Thank you. Is Mr. Tran with us? I can't see him. Sullivan, is Mr. Tran here?
No, he has not joined us yet.
Alrighty, thank you. So I graduated from Welock College, which is now part of BU Welock, and I was trying to find a background and one does not exist. So, Mr., Dr. Coleman, I may need your assistance in finding an appropriate recognition of that merger. So I got both a bachelor's and a master's in an honorary doctorate from Welock, spending my entire life around early childhood education and early childhood leadership. I'd also like to recognize our superintendent.
Yes, I'm so impressed with all of the honors here. I got my undergraduate degree from the University of Minnesota and I majored in psychology and minored in child psychology. Then I got my teaching certificate and master's degree from the University of St. Thomas. Then I got my specialist degree, which is a degree in administration and leadership. And then I got my, also from the University of St. Thomas. And then when I was in Memphis with Carol Johnson, I enrolled in my doctoral program and I received my doctorate in leadership and policy and organization.
Wonderful. As you can see, that education has been very important to all of our school committee members and our superintendent. And I know that we are doing a lot of this month at all levels within our schools to have our teachers and school leaders and others share with our students the variety of colleges and programs that they have attended and also helping kids to understand more about all of the wonderful schools of education that we have right here in the greater Boston area. So hopefully, as this month goes on, we'll be able to hear a little bit more about the kinds of opportunities and experiences our students are happening, having during this month of college exploration as well. Thank you. So, alright, we will now move on to the approval of minutes from the September 22nd, 2021 school committee meeting. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 school committee meeting as presented. Sir, a motion?
Sir.
Thank you. Sir, I think I heard a second in there as well. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for joining us tonight. I'm gonna try to keep my report as brief as I can, but I'd like to create some recent district highlights and some operational updates as well. So I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing College and Career Month. This is a great time for us to be able to showcase all of the good work of our team and what we do to make awareness around college and careers within Boston Public Schools. It marks an exciting time to ensure our young leaders of tomorrow are prepared for post-secondary success. And amidst the pandemic, it's even more important than ever to develop in every learner the knowledge, the skill, and character to excel in college, career, and life. Our entire district offers a wide variety of college access and success programs. And the goal of College and Career Month is to spotlight these initiatives throughout all of October, making sure that students and their families know what resources are available to them. Last Friday, we kicked off College and Career Month with the Citywide and BPS College Pride Day, where a dedicated community of teachers, counselors, and staff not only represented their college colors and alma maters on social media, but they shared their personal paths with us and their students as well. Beyond College Pride Day, some of the key themes this year include College Affordability Week with a highlight on completing the FAFSA, Career and Academic Success Planning with Naviance, Virtual Events, including college and STEM-focused fairs, HBCU information sessions and panel discussions, and understanding and beginning the post-secondary planning process. BPS and Success Boston will be sharing a number of events and activities designed to encourage all students and their families to begin planning for a passion-filled life after high school as early as possible and to encourage students to engage their families, work with their counselors and teachers and partners and mentors and their journey towards achieving their goals. We thank our Success Boston team, the extensive system of college access agencies, and the BPS Office of Secondary Schools for their ongoing leadership in this area to get our students ready in and through college. Thank you for fostering a college-going culture within BPS and the city of Boston. I have some sad news to share. Last week, we learned that longtime BPS educator Michael McCarthy passed away following a brave battle with Alzheimer's disease. Mr. McCarthy was born in Dorchester and went to spend 40 years working for the Boston Public Schools. He began his teaching career at the former Thompson Middle School, then moved to the former Rogers Middle School in Hyde Park, where he spent 35 years as a teacher, an assistant principal, and later a principal. Mr. McCarthy retired from BPS in 2006, but has a lasting legacy in the BPS community. During his time in the district, Mr. McCarthy developed a course of study and reading manual for middle school teachers, directed a multi-ethnic materials workshop, and worked as an instructor for parent workshops, among many other commitments. Mr. McCarthy also founded Boston Baseball Camp, which provides an opportunity for the children of various neighborhoods of Boston to make connections with peers and learn the game of baseball. Boston Baseball Camp has served the youth of this city since 1990 and continues to this day. And what a wonderful day it was for the Red Sox last night. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your immense contributions to the Boston Public Schools and the city of Boston. You will be missed. Last week was a week of celebration and recognition. On Tuesday, September 28th, Mayor JD joined me in visiting the Winship Elementary School in Brighton to celebrate the school's success and congratulate the community on the honor of being recognized as a national Blue Ribbon School. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, schools demonstrating that all students can achieve to high levels. The Winship School received this national honor due to its sharp focus on cultivating its students' identities, interests, and strengths in and out of the, outside of the classroom. As I greeted the staff, parents, caregivers, and students during my visit with the mayor, there was a warm sense of community and family. I could feel in the air the care and attention they give to each child and their families as students entered the building. As I toured the school, I could also see the preparation each teacher took to ensure students are welcomed, that there were enriching texts that reflect their diverse identities, and there were also engaging instructional materials nicely laid out for the day's lessons. This is all of what makes an excellent school and, more importantly, an excellent experience for the students in the care of Boston Public Schools. I am so proud of the Winship family for representing so much of the good BPS does each and every day across all of our schools. Another wonderful event was the English High School, the oldest public high school in the nation, celebrated its 200th birthday. The English High School is a testament to the endurance and the importance of public education, and I'm happy to have shared in yet another milestone for this school. I'm incredibly proud of the English staff and students as the school's graduation rate over the last six years has improved by nearly 30 percentage points. English is made up of an amazing team of educators who continue to cultivate a school culture that is supportive and challenging, meeting students where they are and helping them achieve their full potential. Last Saturday, we celebrated English's 200th anniversary in the virtual event to honor its rich history and its bright future. The virtual event highlighted some great shout-outs and congratulatory marks from English teachers and staff, Secretary of Labor Marty Walsh, Mayor Jamie, Senator Elizabeth Warren, and Governor Charlie Baker, and many more. We also celebrated the renovation of two social-emotional learning rooms last week with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. These rooms were built to give English High students a place to access supportive services and programming provided by the school's behavioral health staff. These bright and inviting spaces help to provide social-emotional support and connection for our students as a critical component of their return to full-time in-person learning. I'm grateful to the team at Loomis Sales for their belief in our students and their work with the English High School, and I look forward to seeing more of what the school community can accomplish in the next 200 years. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize educators across the district who have recently received awards and recognitions for their dedicated service to our community. Congratulations to Marjorie Pita, pre-K teacher, and Candita J. Mandu, Mando, excuse me, Mando Arboleda, Spanish-language literacy teacher for the SLIF program, two amazing educators from the Rafael Hernandez K-8 School in Roxbury. Both will be honored at the Latinos for Education State of Latino Education Conference this week in the midst of Latinx and Hispanic Heritage Month. What a great honor. Today, Marjorie is receiving the prestigious Adelante Award, a national recognition that celebrates public school educators who have made significant contributions to advance educational equity, meaningfully engaging Latino families, and working diligently to enhance the school experience of Latino students. Tomorrow, Candita will be recognized as a Latinx educator of excellence for her exceptional work with Boston Public Schools and her community. The recognition of our dedicated educators does not stop there. The Mass Mentoring Partnership is recognizing the work of Benjamin Helfett, head of school at the Boston Adult Technical Academy, at its Cheers for Champions event, which highlights innovative mentoring programs that successfully adapted their services to best support young people during the COVID-19 crisis. As a result of his leadership, last night, Ben and his school, BATA, received the highly competitive James Connolly Tribute Fund Award. This $15,000 grant is bestowed by Mass Mentoring to only two organizations annually. The grant will help expand the peer-to-peer mentoring program at BATA. And I am so BPS proud of our dynamic and dedicated educators who continue to exemplify our district's commitment to excellence and equity for the benefit of all of our students and their families. As you know, Saturday, October 16th, kicks off BPS STEM Week. We are so excited to have a district-wide initiative. We are so excited to have a district-wide initiative dedicated to STEM that will provide BPS students with the access and opportunity to explore STEM content that is relevant to their school communities. This year, the theme for STEM Week and for the design challenge is how do I improve the health of my city using STEAM? We are asking students to choose a topic connected to environment, transportation, food security, park and recreation, or affordable housing, and create a proposal or a solution to advocate for change. BPS has partnered with BOSSSTEM to support educators in helping our students explore social justice and civics by using STEM as a lever for change. Students participating in the STEM Week Design Challenge will be presenting their final projects and findings at an exhibition hosted at Franklin Park Zoo on October twenty-three. Our STEM department has put together a number of virtual and in-person events to share more information and resources with students and families during STEM Week. I'm excited to see the work of our students and to hear how they see themselves making a difference with STEAM. You can take a look at our district calendar for upcoming events available at bostonpublicschools.org/calender. Now for a few operational updates. I want to just give an update on the support that we're giving to Mission Hill. During our last meeting, I updated the committee on the leadership transition at Mission Hill K-8 School. Early last week, we announced Valerie Low as the interim principal for the school year. Ms. Low resides in the community and is a retired BPS principal with extensive experience. Ms. Low previously led the Curly K-8 School and the Timolte Middle School. I want to again thank Margarita Mooney's Academy Head of School, Danya Vasquez, for her stepping in and last month to support the Mission Hill community through this really difficult time of transition. Retired Hail Principal Ms. Romaine Teague Mills will continue to provide additional support to Ms. Valerie Low, to the Mission Hill K-8 community on a part-time basis. We have also commissioned a law firm, Hinckley Adam, for a top-down-bottom investigation into the additional complaints we've received since the initial investigation, as well as the management and practices at Mission Hill Pilot School. That investigation has now started, and I expect it will continue into the winter, though we've asked them to be thorough and deliberate and to not compromise quality for speed. In addition, I have commissioned an emergency school review for the Mission Hill School. The emergency school review will be a more focused and quickened version of a traditional school quality review. I will review the findings from the second investigation as well as the emergency SQR to inform any decisions about any potential additional corrective action or additional personnel moves. We have redeployed two central office FTEs to Mission Hill from the Office of Special Education. One educator is a learning inclusion specialist who is focused on delivering special education services to students and analyzing special education services and inclusionary opportunities so we can better understand the gaps and implement actionable solutions to address those. In addition, we have redeployed a community field coordinator who is both supporting immediate behavior needs and also analyzing positive behavior intervention systems in order to build a more supportive structure for our Mission Hill students. Again, I know that many Mission Hill parents and caregivers are here tonight to express their concerns about changes in leadership and staffing that has impacted their children's experience. I want to assure the school committee and the public that my team is doing everything as possible to stabilize the school and provide support, and we will continue to pursue the best interest of our students, staff, and the overall community. I want to just update a little bit about COVID testing. We have seen recent challenges with our COVID-nineteen pool testing, something districts across the state have also been experiencing. We are grateful to DESI for providing testing services in our schools, which is a critical mitigation measure to ensure the health and safety of our students, staff, and overall community, but the rollout from the state has been challenging, and we are not the only ones having difficulty. We continue to work with our DESI partners and our testing vendor, CIC Health, to iron out some of the implementation challenges we are experiencing, including increasing the CIC Health staffing capacity. I want to again thank our incredible nurses, our health services, our school leaders and educators for their patience, their flexibility, their grace, and for just pitching in and helping out as we work to strengthen this partnership and make the necessary improvements. As I want to give an update on Advanced Work Class. The Advanced Work Class Working Group was convened and they held ten meetings from April through June. I want to thank our co-chairs Edith Bazil and John Travis for their incredible work convening the group and facilitating the conversations around advanced rigor for our students in grades four through six. I want to inform the school committee that as we form out our comprehensive academic plan for grades four through six, I've asked Dr. Eccleston to collaborate with this working group and to hear their recommendations and align the work to the recommendations regarding AWC, Excellence for All, line it to the Exam School Initiative, changes in the policy for exam schools, and also rigorous instruction and ESI. I expect a future recommendation to the school committee as part of the academic plan update, where we will include the recommendations and any policy changes that may be necessary to AWC. For school year two thousand and twenty-one, I am recommending that we extend the temporary flexibility of the policy governing Advanced Work Class, and I am recommending that the school committee grant me the temporary authority to determine the appropriate standards for these policies for the remainder of the school year. Last week, I shared with the school committee, or the last school committee meeting, I shared that I would be convening a working group on transportation because of some of our challenges that we've been having. I wanted the working group to dive deep into these transportation challenges. I want to first, again, apologize for these shortages that we've been having in our staffing and any inconvenience this has caused to our families, our students, and our educators. But I'd like to highlight some of the steps that we've taken and the progress that has been made. Transdev continues to focus intently on hiring while facing the challenging hiring market that we've all heard of, with many other companies offering large retention and hiring bonuses. Transdev is also working with drivers to reduce, where appropriate, the number of drivers on leave so that we can have them come back to work. We are also actively interviewing and hiring candidates to provide proper coverage on our buses and safely transport our students as bus monitors. In the past one to two weeks, transportation has submitted fifty-one candidates for hire for bus monitors, and three monitors have been fully hired. Our team is also working to consolidate routes. We started the school year with six hundred and forty-nine buses routed to run daily, and so far, we've removed twenty-one, bringing us down to six hundred and twenty-eight buses operating daily. We're aiming to get down to below six hundred and twenty-three total buses within the next week. This work, in combination with our focus on driver hiring, will ultimately lead us to a sustainable point where we can be confident that all of our bus routes will have drivers in place to run them on schedule on a daily basis, and we can provide safe, reliable, and on-time transportation for all our students. Although we have made some progress, we know that any missed stop or late bus is one too many. The team is continuing its hiring and operational improvements in order to meet our goals of every student getting to school on time. Because it's important for the public to understand the deeper complexities of our transportation system and the reasons behind the recurring challenges outside of this year's particular hiring challenges, this new working group will be tasked with speaking transparently about those challenges and coming up with solutions to improve on-time performance, address systemic issues affecting operational excellence, and work towards realizing the challenge of finding a thirty percent reduction or more in costs so that we can turn around and put those dollars back into educating our children. The body will advise me on recommendations to improve operations and performance. As I mentioned during our last meeting, I am forming this group because I believe it will take political will and public support to make these necessary changes. The group will discuss the recommendations made by our transportation consultant and will address operational areas. These really difficult and challenging areas include start times, assignment and choice, particularly how special education students are assigned and how students are assigned, our EL students are assigned to SEI programs, Level One and Level Two students, student information and assignment data transfer, new hire processing, monitor assignments and coverage, walk zones, and neighborhood and choice magnet schools, charter school transportation, private school transportation, and services for our non-BPS schools, collective bargaining agreements, and the clarity of the bid process, meaning selecting of the routes by the drivers, the Transdev partnership and contracting with Transdev, their management and accountability, and our athletic busing. All of these that I just named contribute to our overall effectiveness and operational management of our transportation services. BPS transportation is incredibly complex, and I again want to acknowledge and commend the transportation team, in particular, Deliver Stanislas on their continued work to improve. Ms. Stanislas is actually receiving the Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award at seven PM this evening from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau at their virtual event. It is so well-deserved because Dell and her team work day and night to implement every operational improvement that they can in service of our students and our families. While we are still finalizing the membership of the working group, I expect that the group is going to include the Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Sam Depina, Chief Operations Officer, Indy Alvarez, Director of Transportation, Dela Burn Stanislas, Chief Equity Officer, Charles Grandson, or his designee, a member of the Boston School Committee, a BTU representative, a BPS staff member from each of the following offices, Communications, Data and Accountability, Family and Community Engagement, and Planning and Analysis, who will support this working group, the city of Boston's Chief of Streets, or a designee, a parent representative from each of the following, SPEDPAC, D-LAC, Citywide Parent Group, and the ELL Task Force, a school leader and/or school-based administrator, student representatives, a representative from the local civil rights organization, a representative from the United Stillworkers Union and the Bus Monitors Union, a representative from the Esser Commission, and a representative from the city of Boston of Urban Mechanics. You can see this as a big group, but we feel it is a big challenge and a big task ahead to begin to think about and reimagine Boston Public Schools and the transportation operational issues that we have each and every year. I say often that transportation is a symptom of the system needing to be fixed, and in order for that to happen, I think we need a very transparent and open process for the community to be able to engage with the very challenges of the difficult decisions we need to make about some of the things that have been troublesome for us in the past. I want to also update you finally on vaccine verification for our employees and the weekly testing compliance. We have been working to support our staff in complying with the city of Boston's vaccine verification or weekly COVID-nineteen testing mandate. The city employee mandate takes effect in three phases, September twentieth through October eighteenth. BPS is in the first phase of the mandate. If an employee cannot verify they are fully vaccinated, they are required to submit proof of a negative COVID-nineteen test result every seven days. As of August thirtieth, employees could begin to upload their vaccination verification information into the city's verification online portal. Our employees spend many different locations and work sites, so we have partnered with managers on strategies to complete this process. BPS has sent several emails, texts, and phone reminders to our staff. We also have COVID-nineteen testing at each of our bus yards, self-administered testing at every school, and provide regular updates on how to access free testing for all staff members. BPS established a vaccine clinic last spring exclusively for our workforce and has hosted dozens of back-to-school vaccine clinics at our schools over the last several weeks. BPS continues, excuse me, BPS schools are hosting additional vaccine clinics in the coming weeks, and I know there was one today at Binka and another one today at the Sumner. We have deployed staff to our central kitchen and five other regional hubs to support collecting verification paperwork and assist employees with uploading their documents. BPS also worked with our internal team to translate the vaccine test verification forms into Spanish and Haitian Creole for staff. We've also collected paper copies of vaccine verification submissions for our staff with limited access to technology and are uploading the statuses on behalf of those staff members. Staff who have yet to confirm their vaccination status or produce a weekly negative test will begin to receive notifications that they are not in compliance with the mandate this week. We've developed contingency plans to ensure an undisrupted school day for students, and we continue to meet with our school leaders, central office department leaders, unions, and city staff to problem-solve and ensure compliance. We will have an update on this at our next meeting, and that is my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. You know, I will now open it up to questions and discussions from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That is one to two questions. I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be briefing your responses. If you have additional questions, I'll come back and do a second round. If you have a question, please raise your hand virtually or put the request in the chat. I'll start with Dr. Coleman.
Okay, thank you. Well, a big, rich, big report. There's a lot there, and thank you, thank you for the level of detail. I particularly want to appreciate what your proposals around the transportation, because in fact, that's, those are the questions I was going to be asking for more specification. So I look forward to getting, you know, getting that written, and so I go over it in more detail, and not that I'm such an expert that I can see what you're not getting, because I know you're consulted a lot, but I want to get this, get, I think we all need to dig into that, because this is a major problem that's been for a long time, and we need to be educated, well-educated about what's going on in consulting, but I really, really appreciate the breadth of the committee that you're trying to pull together for that, because that's exactly what, if you hadn't said it, it is very close to what I was going to be suggesting we do. So I want to turn to the area that's vaguer for me, and when you say you want more authority to move forward on AWC, when I looked for the report, I saw what the problem was with AWC and what the struggles and challenges we're facing. I didn't have a sense of what kind of possible solutions you were proposing, and if we, you know, what's the range of possibilities, and if you have to move forward with an immediate decision, because everything is so complex, what are the type of things that you think needs to be done to continue that program, particularly the work that's been done over the past five years or so, to increase equitable access to those early programs?
Thank you for that question, Dr. Coleman. On AWC, the reason that I am not bringing a policy change from the working group is because we have greater work to do because of the exam school policy and the requirements within the exam school policy to do ESI. and the requirements within the exam school policy to do E S I and to really look at uh, E F A expansion and to incorporate that into an overall academic vision for rigor at grades four through six. And I wanna give, uh, Dr. Eccleston the time to meet with the committee um, and hear their recommendations, and he hasn't had time to do that just yet. Um, so I didn't feel comfortable bringing it forward to the school committee at this time, because there's just um, too many moving pieces with grades four through six um, and the overall academic uh, work that we wanna do. So he'll bring that forward. He'll meet with the um, Edith and John and the entire committee, hear their recommendations, and then we'll um, move forward with a, a broader vision around grades four through six and how we um, a- address the advanced work class, how we address expand, expanding E F A if we wanna do that, how we support E S I and exam school um readiness um, in, in A W C and advanced work class. I think all of those are related, and it didn't seem appropriate to bring just a piece of the puzzle. Um, and so that's why I'm asking for the policy um, to be where we just retain what we had last year, where we don't give the Terranova to forty-five hundred students when it really only impacts about a hundred and twelve students right now. Um, and we allow for the um, program to um, for the schools that have A W, uh, A W C to make those decisions at the school level, which is the current policy that's in place.
So let, let, let me, let me try and, I got that right. So you're saying that um, um, we, we, we accepted a new proposal a year or a year and a half ago. I don't remember the exact date. And you're asking for an extension of that policy un- until at which time you feel that, 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 that your team could put together a, a, a long-range policy. So rather than reinstitute a new policy that may not be relevant, you're asking for more time to build a useful uh, and equitable policy going forward. I get that. Is that, that's what I'm hearing?
That is, that is correct, and it's really just a stay-put for the policy, the temporary reprieve we had last year.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Not making any changes.
Thank you. Mr. De Arujio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So actually, in, in reverse order of issues uh, that Dr. Coleman raised. So on A W C, I, I, I think I understand it better now. Um, but I'm actually, I'm, I'm not inclined though to, to extend, extend the waiver. Um, I, I think a test can be given, uh, you know, kids are, as I learned, kids are, you know, they're being tested on, on various things right now. Um, so I, I don't, I don't see why, why we need the waiver again at this point. Um, and why not revert back until, or, you know, have the task force come forward with their recommendations and begin, uh, begin implementing that, that process? It's just, it's just a timing issue or?
No, we don't, we don't uh, have the capacity to do the Terranova test. Um, and so we weren't planning to do the Terranova test for testing everybody when it really only impacts such a very small um, of, of the population. And the temporary policy has been working really well at the schools that have A W C right now. Um, and so we just figured we'd bring forward a stay-put for this year. Since we know that the pandemic is still really impacting learning loss, our M C A S scores really reflect that, and we think that it would um, not be the appropriate thing to do right now in terms of determining at third grade level, um, students capacity in order to be in an advanced work class. So we think those decisions are better made at the school level where they know the students right now. And um, and they can see their formative assessments and they know where they're at, because the impacts of the pandemic are, are just it, they're pretty great right now for our students.
I know, I appreciate that. I, I know all the kids are taking the, uh, the map test, right?
Right. That's a, that's a formative assessment that we give. It doesn't have any high stakes a- attached to it for students, whereas this would be a high-stakes test for third graders who have been in a pandemic for eighteen months.
Yeah, okay. Um, and so I, I, because I, when I got this report, um, I didn't have a chance to talk to folks on the task force, but they feel that um, it's fine to kind of have this waiting further wait, or are they anxious to get these recommendations implemented or?
Well, I think that the task force members would like to um, see us just not have A W C. Um, and I think that that has to be just reviewed with the overall academic vision. Um, and so I, um, we're just not quite ready yet to bring those recommendations and just do a little bit more vetting with the community.
Okay, all right. Um, and then on bussing, um, I appreciate Superintendent. Uh, again, mapping out that this is a systemic issue. Um, I will say for my colleagues that, uh, here on the school committee that th- this is about as big as, of an issue that I think we're gonna deal with, and that we as a stakeholder in this process, as school committee, um, have to be uh, prepared uh, to be part of this process to ensure that all the stakeholders, the mayor's office, the city council, uh, obviously, you know, the district, um, uh, you know, labor, uh, the contractors, that everyone is aligned uh, to make sure it gets the result uh, that we want, which is to have our kids arrive at school and arrive at home safely in a timely way. That, that's not happening. Um, I know it's, it's better now today, obviously, than it was, uh, and the superintendent highlighted that. But this, this fiasco happens every year. We, we, we know that. Um, and we really need to be at the table um, as, as one of the key stakeholders. And I, I, just to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, um, I'm not gonna vote in favor of a policy or of a collective bargaining agreement uh, with respect to the bussing policy um, until, uh, until, uh, I have in, in writing verifiable that all of these stakeholders are aligned, making sure that the fiasco that we have happen every year. And of course, we have a different flavor this year because of, because of COVID, um, but that doesn't happen again. Um, and I'm not, I'm not confident that we're, we're anywhere near there. I know elections are happening. I know it's an issue and families are are reaching out to the other stakeholders. Families are reaching out to school committee as stakeholder. Um, and we really need to uh, make sure that we take, we take a, a leadership position on this, that we are, you know, firmly understand all the pieces. We approve the policies on zones. We approve the policies on start times and end times. All, all the pieces that the superintendent, I think, you know, um, uh, highlighted for us. At the end of the day, we're, the school committee is making these policies, right? So we're responsible for very key pieces, um, and obviously, the other stakeholders are responsible for their pieces. So we have to send a clear message to them that, you know, we're gonna wrestle with these issues. We're gonna get a, a hold of them. I, I do recommend that we have a, a task force uh, complimentary to, uh, to the efforts of the superintendent doing, not, you know, not to supplant or duplicate. Uh, but uh, maybe something for our retreat to talk about, you know, next week. This is such a critical, high-level issue that we have to be ready uh, to properly engage in this, constructively engage in this, and, and come to a solution for, for families. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mercer?
Hello, good evening. So, um, my first question is, what makes B P S transportation, transportation so complicated or challenging? Is it the amount of students? Is it where they live, et cetera?
It's all of that. Um, the biggest piece, Ms. Mercer, is the fact that we bus all over Boston. Um, you know, our assignment system is very complicated. Um, we assign and strand and sort our students in Boston Public Schools and send them to different schools. That has to be really looked at. Um, it's inequitable that, the way that we do that, and it has to um, be examined. Um, whether that's giving every student a fair shot. That's one piece. Um, I think the other piece is around neighborhood schools. And, oh, you know, we bus about twenty-seven thousand students, and so that's a lot of students on buses. Um, and so looking at, um, you know, close to home and how students are assigned is really a, a key piece. Um, I think another piece is start times and tiers and, you know, how, how those are decided and walk zones. The state, uh, it requires bussing for any student over two miles. We do it at one and a half miles. So we have more students on the buses. We also bus charter schools and private school students. Um, and we bus out of the city and into the city. Um, and so there's just a, a lot of complications, not to mention the traffic um, that, that uh, Boston has. So I think all of those are really tough issues to talk about um, with the public and talk openly and transparently about the challenges with each of those decisions. So I appreciate um, Mr. De Arujio's comments about this has to be a very large conversation with the community about the kind of schools that they, they want to have in Boston.
Thank you. So, um, my next question is on vaccination. So to be clear, students need to have their parents cons, are the parents or guardians consent to receive the vaccination from B P S?
That is accurate.
And so my follow-up question to that is for the students that want to be vaccinated, but their parents won't let them receive the vaccine. Will the B P S somehow help the student, or is it kind of up to them?
I think you could speak to your social workers, and your social workers could provide additional information to the parents. Um, also, your school nurse can provide information to your parents and speak, speak with them about the safety of the vaccine. I, we do anticipate that vaccines will be available at the end of this month for, um, I think ages five and up. Um, and so if those vaccines become available, you know, we will do everything we can to stand up vaccination clinics for our students and provide additional information to parents about the safety of the vaccine.
Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Um, Polanco Garcia.
Yes, thank you, uh, segunda presidenta. Uh, my question is about the transportation. Nosotros hemos recibido muchas quejas. Hay muchas, el dentro de la comunidad de padres, muchas quejas sobre la transportación. Valoro mucho.
Within the community, the community itself, there's been many complaints and, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. There's many complaints in the community. I do value a lot.
Valoro mucho el trabajo que están haciendo, uh, por el informe que presentó la superintendente, pero hay cosas que eh, lo, las familias están aprendiendo, ¿verdad? Y estamos tratando de educarla en ese sentido, pero hay cosas que no pueden esperar.
The families are learning, and we're trying to educate them in the process. I do appreciate the report provided by the superintendent. However, there are some issues and things that cannot wait, unfortunately.
Por ejemplo, con qué prontitud se le avisan a las familias cuando el transporte no va a llegar? Segundo, las muchas familias a veces tienen que salir y no llegan a tiempo a la escuela. Valoramos que muchos, incluso principales, se tienen que quedar ahí esperando.
So there are a couple of things. There are a couple of things, especially, well, the immediacy. How soon will the families be notified? Sometimes, uh, the families will arrive there and not arrive, and they have to wait in the process. We continue, they continue waiting.
Entonces pienso que tenemos, esto es una conversación que tenemos que tener. Estoy de acuerdo con el señor de Arroyo. Eh, señor Renani Araujo, tenemos que tener estas conversaciones, pero en lo inmediato. Hay familias ahora mismo que están esperando, que están, están sufriendo estas situaciones. Y sabemos, sa, también que son las familias, una gran cantidad de familias que usan el transporte escolar.
We have to consider that there are multiple families, many families that are suffering at the moment that they do use public transportation or school transportation. I do have to, I do agree with them, Mr. Arujio. We have, we need to have these conversations. But there are families suffering in the process because of this.
Cuando, eh, la superintendenta inició el informe sobre transportación, nos dijo que, que habían entrevistado cincuenta y un, eh, personas, cincuenta y un candidatos. Esto, esto es bueno.
According to the report that was provided by the superintendent, Madam Superintendent, uh, the, she mentioned that fifty-one potential candidates had been interviewed, which is seen as a good thing.
Sin embargo, vi también que habían retirado veintiuno choferes. Habían sido removidos.
However, I have to point out as well that I heard that twenty-one drivers had been removed.
Entonces, eh, no sé la balanza. ¿Cómo estamos? Me gustaría saber cómo estamos realmente ahora mismo en, en el proceso de contratación de los choferes. Porque si, si entrevistamos cincuenta y un perso, quiero saber que entendí bien. Es lo primero. Quiero saber que entendí bien. Digo, entrevistamos cincuenta y uno y fueron removidos veintiuno. Me perdí un poquito ahí. Me gustaría que me explicara más sobre esto.
I have to say, I have, I got a little bit lost. Uh, I just wanna make sure that I do understand what is being proposed and what I heard correctly. If I heard correctly, fifty-one potential candidates were, were hired for that in the process. However, twenty-one had been removed. I'm a little confused about this. I need to make sure that I do understand this. I, and I will appreciate if you could please elaborate on this. How can we balance this situation between hiring and removal at the same time? Where are we in the process?
So we removed twenty-one routes. Um, and we're conduct, consolidating the routes. That doesn't mean that the drivers were removed. They were just moving to other buses. So we took those out of the equation, which then gives us more drivers to cover more routes. So we didn't remove those, and the fifty-one is fifty-one monitors, not drivers. And I don't know if, Mr. Depina, you have anything else to add, and if that, if you, um, I wanna make sure that you understood what I said, Ms. Garcia.
Yeah, um, yo estoy tratando de escuchar al intérprete, que me, me, me tendría que dar la respuesta, pero no lo escuché cuando usted habló, perdón.
I was trying to, to hear the simultaneous interpreter, but I did not hear the interpretation when you spoke. I'm trying to hear the simultaneous interpreter.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I try to speak slowly, and sometimes I go fast, and it makes it hard, so.
I'll be able to summarize that, uh, Madam Superintendent. Lo que está diciendo ella, bueno, que fue que fueron removidos los monitores, básicamente. Rafaela y ventiuno fueron las rutas que se removieron. No se removieron personas sino rutas. Y se está hablando también de monitores, no de choferes. I just clarified to make sure that she had the interpretation. She did not have access to simultaneous interpretation. That's why I am providing what is, was, what was being said, Madam Superintendent, so she can be linguistically present at all times.
Okay, quería, quería estar clara porque entendí eso, y, y, y es una confusión bien triste, porque yo dije, no estamos avanzando. Si removemos un veintiuno, entonces quería estar bien clara de que estaba entendiendo bien lo que estaban diciendo los intérpretes.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, because that's what I, I, I apparently heard from the interpreter. I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly, and now, thank you for the clarification you just had provided.
Bueno, gracias.
Pero no obstante, no obstante, perdón, quiero insistir en el punto de la comunicación con las familias. Cuando los tra, el transporte no va a estar a tiempo en la escuela, eh, pienso que es, eh, no es bueno, no es saludable, no es cómodo para la familia, darse cuenta que el niño no va a tener la tran, la transportación, faltando, eh, una hora para que, eh, eh, para, para que llegue el bus. Eso hace, se ha puesto problema.
It is very important. It is very important that I do have to insist, and I do have to emphasize my point. When it comes to communication, it is imperative that the families know if there is a delay or not, and how soon, and what's the immediacy by which the families are going to be told. Because this could be problematic, is an unhealthy situation, not knowing that, especially if it happens uh, really fast in, in the pickup times in the morning.
Yeah, I, um, I know, I don't know if Mr. Depina wants to talk about our notification process and how we notify parents.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cassilius, and good evening, members of the school committee and, and the public at large. Um, so our communication process um, starts very early in the morning. Um, once we are aware that, um, there is no bus coverage for the particular route, this, we find this information out about six A M. In the morning, um, because that's when we know most of the routes are covered or not covered, and we begin, begin communications with families um, at that early time, as well as to the schools to inform them of, um, of coverage or no coverage. Um, and then we continue that communication ongoing through the morning until we reach someone. So sometimes it's difficult to reach, um, families and schools, so we continue that effort. In the afternoon time, we follow a similar process. In the afternoon time, um, we do wanna, um, stress that because of where we are now with the reduction in the number of buses and routes, um, as Dr. Cassilius mentioned, and the increased number of drivers, we are at a way better place on coverage. We have about approximately two routes left to, um, to cover, and we're confident that we'll get that done and resolved. But for the most part, around communication, we'll continue to communicate with families in the afternoon until we can make sure there's a bus to cover. Um, and once a parent or, or guardian knows that they're able to pick up a child, as long as they are in communication with the schools as well, we're in communication with parents and schools in our transportation department, um, to convene the coverage. um to convene the coverage um in the in getting kids back home from school. So um again, but we we continue to do our best. Um we also urge that if families have updated contact information, that they could just continuously provide that to schools. Sometimes we may or may not have correct numbers and we try to call, oh, I'm sorry. And I just also urge that families continue to update um their parent contact information to make sure we have the correct emails and our phone numbers to also communicate as well. Sometimes we run into barriers of that also. So but thank you and we appreciate your concern and we share that concern. And we'll um ensure to um focus on communication as much as we can. Gracias, Tony.
Thank you. Ms. Lopera.
Um before we move on, I just want to make sure that um Ms. Polanco Garcia has gotten the answers interpreted for her. What's up?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, thank you so much, Superintendent, for that report. I I especially want to thank um the pieces that you mentioned around all of the factors affecting transportation. Um and I think we also really need to be thinking about facilities um and the impact of this challenge, where schools are located, the physical um state of structures and where most of our students and families live. Um and obviously tied to this is also the quality of education resources available at each school. So um definitely a a large undertaking um that will require many of us to be growing in similar directions. Um and so no real question there, but just appreciation for for that um for that being taken on. I also do want to emphasize Ms. Polanco Garcia's point around communication. I know that this is something that you all are actively working on, especially around transportation. Um but I feel the need to say that in general, there's just room for growth in this area for for Boston Public Schools to make sure that our families are getting the information that they need, when they need it. Um and that they have enough reaction time to be able to respond to that communication, especially around transportation. Um and then
Can I say one thing about that?
Of course.
One, I agree. And um because of the, one of the things we'll look at with the driver's bid is that, you know, we have a hundred and five standby drivers. So really, if they all show up, we shouldn't have this problem. Second part of that is the morning bid where there's absences. We don't know who's going to be absent until they're absent. When they don't show up, that's why Mr. De Pina said at six AM, we pretty much know because they're not reporting to work. So then they put the, let's say they put up thirty thirty routes because we had thirty bus drivers who were absent that day. Then in seniority order, they have to pick and choose which route they want to cover if the standby drivers show up. And what I want to make public and transparent to everybody is this process is in the contract with the drivers. Which which delays it. And so I just think that the public needs to understand all of the contracts that have been signed, all of the complexities that go into that as well as all the other pieces that you mentioned as well um so that we can really get to the bottom of it, you know.
I agree, and I appreciate you sharing those pieces. Um I can tell you that uh when my son was taking the bus um two years ago, uh we did not know all of those uh pieces. And we knew that we were having issues and our bus just wasn't showing up and we were just angry with BPS that the bus isn't here. And so I think it is really important for um our residents and um folks who are part of our community to really understand the challenges and also how they can be a part of resolving some of that. Um so thank you for for sharing that and I hope that with the working group more of this information is available and that we can really just work together on finding those solutions. So appreciate that. Uh the other piece that I want to touch on was around uh pool testing. I know you mentioned some of the implementation challenges. Um I know that this is through the partnership with DUCI and CIC Health. Um and so I just want to understand from your perspective, how is the state responding to this challenge? Um and I think honestly, more importantly, how are our communities, how are communities with high percentage of Latinx and Black students really being prioritized? Because I also know that as a parent, um it is concerning to know that not every school has the pool testing that we were all expecting and to really think that our children are safe in schools. So curious to to learn a little bit more about that.
It has been a challenge um and a daily challenge to work this out. The state is responding. I've met with the commissioner and his staff about it. Um then there were uh additional staffing um resources put on it. Um that has not been actualized the way that it was supposed to be. And so I've all I talked to the commissioner again and asked for another meeting to really look at this um because, you know, we were told that Boston would be prioritized and that's why we selected to continue to go with the state. And so we will continue to work with them on their their testing and they'll continue to pressure CIC Health, their vendor. Um but you know, I am told that it is the same issue is it's a staffing issue uh that the vendor is having. And so they're having to acquire other vendors to in order to be able to meet the needs within Boston Public Schools. And so we're still trying to get to the bottom of where they're at with their staffing and the vendors and Megan Costello is in daily, if not hourly, conversations with them coordinating and our wonderful nurses and and school leaders and staff have been picking up where the staffing hasn't been and helping to conduct and train even their new folks that they bring in. And it's been incredibly challenging. Uh I don't know if Megan, you want to speak to a little bit more in depth about some of the challenges that we're having. Thank you, Dawn. Uh she may not be on just yet.
Well, thank you. I I appreciate that. I think it's
Provide a more in-depth update on those challenges um.
Yeah, and I think how we can be supportive. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that our 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 kids and our staff um have the resources that they need in order to be healthy and be productive in their school buildings. Um so thank you for that. I think the last piece I'll mention, and this is more, I guess, for my colleagues, uh my school committee colleagues. Um we've talked, we've heard a little bit about vaccine mandates with our teachers. And I'm wondering um when we begin to start talking about a timeline for mandating vaccination, not solely with our teachers and staff, um but also with eligible students. Um I think that one that could perhaps be encouraging for some of our families who perhaps are hesitant. Um and we have students who are ready or interested in being vaccinated, um but they need help in making that happen. Um and so for my colleagues, I think that this is something that we need to be considering and talking about.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there'll be some direction hopefully from the state around that. Um as we begin to really consider all of the implications of that and 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 family wishes on that.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have any questions?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to be respectful of time. My questions and comments about transportation have been asked and and answered. I do echo the importance of communications in particular on that. Um Ms. Lopera, your your question about um vaccine mandates is interesting. As you undoubtedly know, some districts are starting to do it. Um LA is one of the first to do it. Now the state of California overall is going to be mandating it. We are closely tracking, you know, what other districts are doing, what the response has been, what the concerns have been. Um some families are obviously concerned about the experimental nature of it. And as that gets approved and particularly what happens for the younger students. So but I I agree with you that I think and we should be watching and considering very closely because it does provide a measure of support for families. And in line with that, Superintendent, you mentioned about the district tracking as uh City of Boston asked overall, our employees who have vaccines and the work that you're doing to gather the data. I do um mention that it is very difficult to go on to the City of Boston site some for some people and uh provide the information. And I say that because both Chair Robinson and I had difficulty in putting our vaccine information in because as school committee members, we were required to do it as well. And we were unable after many, many attempts um to log in and uh put in our information to the point where we both had to do the paper process. And so I'm sensitive to, we may have a number of employees that have the same difficulties that the chair and I had on that. So and and you did mention that you are reaching out, but I just uh thank you to employees who may have difficulty in offering to help with the paper process and then implement it otherwise because that is a sticking point for for some people. And I, again, I only speak for personal experience. I know the chair and I and maybe some other members had had the same difficulty.
Can I, can I comment?
Absolutely.
Just thank you for that, bringing that up again because it is the 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 piece that is really troubling for me is that, you know, we see the same equity statistics with these employees. So it's a higher percentage of African-American Latinx community members and Haitian um members. And they're hourly employees. And so we have been trying to use paper to make sure that we're providing the additional support. We're now going to provide fifteen minute rapid tests to our employees to get tested and rapid tested because we understand the barriers that some of our employees have each and every day. Um and so we're we're really trying to do everything possible to make sure that they're able to verify their status.
Yeah, because I just wouldn't, I will caution us altogether against assuming that if someone has not put in vaccine information, it means that they're not vaccinated. There may be people like the chair and myself who had been vaccinated, but were unable technology-wise to have the system accept our information. So thank you for all you're doing, paper and otherwise to help bridge that gap. And um lastly, just to clarify my interpretation of what you said about AWC is that you are recommending we keep the policy in place that you asked for and we agreed to last year, which was in effect to allow the school leaders to have AWC decide how to handle it on a lot in conjunction with their school site councils, uh school site councils to decide how to handle AWC invites at their particular school. Um because of the difficulties of doing Terra Nova, etc., now if you have expressed our students coming back from a year and a half of pandemic and having them sit very quickly for high stakes tests versus the schools deciding locally how they want to handle it while you take the recommendations from the task force or the working group and incorporate them into Dr. Eccleson's work um looking to expand excellence for all and looking to um put in place improvements for four to six grades as as we mandated in our vote on the exam schools. And you'll look to incorporate the S of funding in particular to each of those. So what I heard you saying is we're taking the working group recommendation seriously. We're looking how to incorporate it, which to me is better than just, you know, one-off implementing the group's recommendations. You're trying to embed it in your work overall. And you're saying let the school leaders, considering it's only a small number of schools that have AWC, let them to continue to decide how to do it within their populations while we focus on this bigger picture.
That is correct. We are talking about um a really small number of schools. I think it's four schools, the Quincy, the Murphy, the um Orinberger and the Jackson Man School who currently offer programs. Many of them have figured out how to do this in a hybrid fashion. I think the Quincy School is using their pre-IB program or their PYP program to have rigor at grades four through six for all their students. I think the Murphy School is also offering uh this to everyone. And then in the Orinberger, I think they have still discrete classes, but those teachers have worked together um with parents to identify students and and place them in in um their fourth grade uh classes.
So they're each deciding a different way that works best for their school and their school community. And in the meantime, you're focused on taking the learnings from excellence for all, um which I think had some real promise when we started to implement it a few years ago and think about how we expand this uh district wide. So but thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I I'm going to leave that up to the academic team to work with the working group on how to expand EFA. I think that there were some implementation challenges with that. And I think that they're wanting to do some reforms around that. And it makes sense if we're going to do that, we might as well also do AWC and ESI and the overall approach to grades four through six. Uh as we think about the overall uh pathways and academic vision.
Yeah, and ESI being exam school initiative. So that was the initiative to help the students who were interested in exam school, how to prepare for it.
That's right. And that's part of the policy that we are looking at grades four through six. And we also have to revamp our grades of fifth grade and sixth grade, social studies and science.
So the AWC recommendations or the uh AWC task force recommendations are one ingredient in what is a fairly complicated recipe.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Like everything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent and and members for your questions. I just have one quick one. Um Dr. Consolius, could you just give us a a quick update on what's happening with food services? Um I'm interested in both understanding how are we doing. I know we still have some shortages. And also how have schools managed around with the tents, etc., for being able to have a socially distanced um lunch for their programming for their students.
Well, with everything else going on, it has been um also a really big challenge around food nutrition, as you probably read in the Globe with not only staffing challenges but supply challenges. And again, I you know, superintendents across the nation feel like everything is being thrown at them right now. Um and it is, it is quite the challenge. Um so with our specific, I think we're still down about twenty percent. Um I think it's a little more than that, like twenty-two percent of our employees in the Food Nutrition Department. So it is really challenging. I think we're um having to um shift to pre-plated meals in over twenty schools, you know, where they typically would have had My Way Cafe, which, you know, is really hard. And so we want to hurry up and get these staffing. We have done everything to try to get more staff uh in these positions. Um I think residency is a problem um for our 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 employees, but it's written in their contract that residency is required for our these hourly employees. And I think that that's also causing some challenge. Um you know, our bus monitors are paid, you know, twenty-two dollars uh for a ride on the bus. I think that that's challenging. I just think that structurally, fundamentally, during the pandemic, we have realized how essential our hourly employees are. And I think that, you know, this is something that we need to take up across the nation in terms of of public education and how we resource uh ourselves and how we compensate our employees at the hourly hourly wages as an equity measure too. Many of them are our families.
Right. So will these issues be able to be reviewed at the next time the contracts are being renewed? Was there anything that, or is there anything that can be done?
Yes, and the challenging thing there is we're um, you know, we have the um all of the employee contracts. And so um we have all of the considerations, you know, with any kind of adjustments that need to be made that um you know, you want to be fair and uh to all of your employee groups. And so I think that, you know, they all kind of go together. So it's, you know, a two percent increase to someone making twenty dollars is very different than a two percent increase to someone who's making over a hundred thousand dollars. And I just think that there's just some equity and im parity that we have to think about as we think about how we structure our contracts in the future. Which means also, I mean, then there's there's payoffs, there's trade-offs for us, right? I mean, all of these things come with trade-offs. And so there's trade-offs then, like, we can, if if we want to do something like that, we have to come up with the funding for that. Um, you know, across all of our employee groups and, you know, then that means we can't do new investments in athletics or other things that, you know, our facility or other thing. Maybe facility is a different pot of money, capital, but still it's, you know, money is money. So it, you know, it is, it is a um, it's a balancing act of of these types of decisions that have to be made. And I think it's important for the public to know all of these really tough decisions and complexities that go into um into employee contracts or into operational excellence or into all of these things.
All right. Thank you for that. And lastly, is there any update on EMK and and how they're faring?
I went over there and visited and walked the school with them and spoke with them. We continue to seek out new space for E M K. We had a spot that was really a great area for them, but you know, it was in a basement. So the school leader said that, you know, she didn't think that that was going to be appropriate. So we are still seeking it out and she is, you know, you know, considering and thinking about maybe they, you know, stick it out where they're at now, at the end of cot for the year, so that we can turn our focus to next school year and make sure that we're not in a similar place where we don't have swing space. So we have to figure out the long-term solution for them and really start to put our effort there. And, but we continue to work with the E M K community. We have a realtor who is working with us to try to scour every single space available. So I know last time I was speaking, I got several community members who sent some ideas and we explored those and they just weren't viable.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, is there any further discussion? No. So I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
Sumo.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Every none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Berugio?
Yes.
Ms. Lo Para?
Yes.
Ms. Blanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to general public comment. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have twenty-four speakers for general public comment. Each person will have two minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have thirty seconds remaining, those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin with our students. Claudia Bueno. After Claudia, we'll hear from Eliana Montalvo, Salika Soto and Nicole Wang. If you can all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Claudia?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Bueno. I am a youth community organizer with Sociedad Latina and I attend B C L A High School. I am here to speak about the recent removal of Columbus Day, the importance of an act in replacing this holiday with Indigenous People's Day in the city of Boston. Sociedad Latina has long been advocating for proper ethnic studies program in B P S. So our students can learn about the history of people celebrating Columbus Day. Completely disrespects the history, history of Black and Indigenous students whose history has been filled with trauma and pain due to Columbus and colonizers who robbed this country. Columbus should not be celebrated, let alone given a day. When we celebrate Columbus, we're celebrating a racist genocide, massive land robbery, slavery, rape and systematic torture. We look forward to celebrated Indigenous peoples in B P S and retelling of our nation history in our schools. We want to take, thank our acting major, Ken Janey, who's signed and ordered this afternoon to recognize the second Monday in October as Indigenous People's Day, beginning this year. I want to highlight that Ken Janey said when signing this order, signing and, and the order is easy. We need to take the steps necessary to understand our complicated history to make sure that we're lifting up those who for too long have been marginalized and that we create space for us to enjoy the city of Boston. Sociedad Latina youth leaders have been advocating for the removal of Columbus. That we're acknowledged that Indigenous people whose land has stolen that the terrible history of our nation. We need to make sure that students properly understand this complicated and tragic history. We know that when history is not thought, is repeated. Story of U S history has been completely one-sided when addressing Indigenous people. We are left in the shadows. B P S needs to do better in host Indigenous people, curriculum days and teachings. This leads me back to importance of fully funding and implementing ethnic studies across our entire district. Make sure.
Excuse me, I'm afraid you passed your time. If you could please wrap up.
Yeah. Thank you for superintendent and B P S Committee Board.
Thank you very much. I'll now invite our interpreters to offer support for our next set of speakers. I will now turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony. School committee member, Ms. Palanco Garcia, will receive Spanish interpretation by phone when testimony is being presented in a language other than English or Spanish. Our next speaker is Elan, Eliana Montalvo. Eliana Montalvo?
Here.
Bueno, tenemos a la señora Eliana Montalvo.
Si, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Eliana Montalvo. I'm sorry. Yo soy una madre que tenía mis niños en Mission Hill. Y los tuve que sacar porque mis hijos fueron amenazados por otro estudiante diciendo que lo iban a matar, que iban a matar a mi familia. Y hasta el día de hoy tuve que sacar mis hijos. Estoy muy agradecida con la directora, Dani.
Dame un tiempito y voy a decir lo primero que dijo. Bueno, señora Eliana.
Okay.
Bueno, gracias. Entonces, my name is Eliana Montalvo. I have, I'm the mother of two children that were attending Mission Hill. Unfortunately, I had to take them out of the school because my, my kids were threatened to death. The threats were directly at them, that they were going to kill them. They were directed to our family, that our family was going to be killed. And under those circumstances, I had to remove them from school. Siga, señora.
Yo le agradezco a Dani, que siempre me dio el soporte que yo necesitaba, me ayudó a mover mis hijos de escuela. Y mi preocupación es, yo nunca recibí nada de que ha pasado en esa situación, en que quedó todo. Y me imagino que igual que mis hijos, hay otros niños en esa escuela pasando por la misma situación.
Entonces, I want to thank Dani. She was a great support for me and for my family. She helped the, move my kids from one school to another and do the transfer smoothly. However, I did not receive any, any word on what happened, you know, what was the end of this, you know, these threats. And it is a concern for me because I want to know the, the outcome, what happened? Why was this happening to my kids, my family? And also, is this happening to other kids in Mission Hill, which could be a possibility? Siga, señora.
Otra, otra preocupación que yo tenía acerca de Mission Hill es que hay en específico un maestro que llevaba esmalte de uñas para que los niños varones se pintaran las uñas de la escuela. También di un complaint de eso y tampoco hicieron nada.
Another concern that I had in Mission Hill was about a teacher that would bring nail polish to the school and encourage the students to, to polish their nails. I put a complaint about that. I didn't agree with that. However, I never received, you know, any, any reports or any answers about it. Siga, señora.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, que se han completado los treinta minutos, entonces segundos, entonces, mejor dicho, tiene treinta segundos para terminar.
No, eso sería todo. Estoy de verdad agradecida con el trabajo que Dani está haciendo. Y yo espero que yo no sea la única madre que alcena voz por los estudiantes de Mission Hill. Yo espero que hagan algo porque esa escuela necesita mucha ayuda. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Okay, this is, this is my main concern. You know, that I didn't receive the, the reports either way. And I know Danny is doing a great job, you know, and I am raising my voice to support the children in Mission Hill because that school is in great need of support and help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz, if you could just communicate that we do have the parents' contact information and a member of the superintendent's staff will be following up with the family.
Señora Eliana, me acaban de informar que por favor le deje saber que un miembro de la superintendente del distrito tiene su información y se van a comunicar con usted para poder hablar y saber lo que usted está buscando en los reportes que está queriendo tener. Bueno? Okay, Ms. Sullivan, I said it. Hopefully she heard me.
Thank you. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Our next, thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Wang. Nicole will be using Mandarin interpretation. If Nicole is with us, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom.
Nicole，您在吗？ 您在，请您先举手。I'm sorry, I don't hear any response.
There's a Ken Wang?
Hello, hello?
你好，你是你，Nicole王吗？ 哦，可以，可以，可以。
Okay, 你跟他说一下吧。
Okay, actually Nicole would like to testify in English. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, this is my first time. So I just have been to Boston for a few years and my, I'm trying, I moved from suburban to Boston. So I'm trying to, now my daughter to attending like the middle school, which is a famous school. So now I just want to know when we can start application. It's just a kind of like in nowhere. So I want to know when we can start application, because this year is different, right? It's no more exam.
Hello? Hi. Thank you. There is going to be an exam school admissions application, excuse me, admissions update later this meeting.
Oh, okay. So where are supposed to get application and just fill in the application, that's it and waiting for the poll? Or what are supposed to do? Because like I say, I don't want to miss it. Isn't it sometimes, something like, I want to still able to get everything done and properly? So just go to your, go to the website, get an application and fill out applications and so wait, is that right?
Liz, if we get her number, we can certainly follow up with her. Okay. Very good. We do have your information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our, our next speaker is Salika Soto. Salika will be using Spanish interpretation.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Salika Soto. Soy madre de B P S, miembro de Beja y residente de Southend.
Buenas, mi nombre, my name is Salika Soto, I'm a mother of children in the schools in the district. Donde es que vive, perdón?
Southend.
And I, and I live in the Southend.
Los enlaces familiares y los directores de las escuelas necesitan más capacitación y apoyo para involucrar a todas las familias y construir el liderazgo de padres y estudiantes necesario.
The workers for the community that engage the community, from my point of view, they need to have more training to be able to engage the families in a more proper way.
Esto debe de ser de manera verdaderamente accesible, oportuna, equitativa.
This should have, they should have good access. It should have equity and it should have a good training.
Esta este involucramiento de padres también tiene que ser respetuoso y con suficiente tiempo.
And involving the parents needs to be respectfully and it takes a good amount of time to do it.
Para que los grupos de padres y estudiantes aprendan de recursos y que representen la voz y diversidad del distrito.
Because the group of parents need to learn about all the resources that the district has. They need to bring their voices and they need to represent the diversity that the community has.
Pero es necesario que haya acceso a una interpretación de calidad y un aviso de más de cuarenta y ocho horas.
It is necessary that the quality of the interpretation for these workers has, is a good quality interpretation and also that the communication happens within a four, forty-eight hour lapse. So we need a quality interpretation and parents need more than forty-eight hours to be able to access these meetings. Sorry, I just had to provide better interpretation.
So las voces de los padres y los estudiantes no pueden quedar fuera de la toma de decisiones en estos consejos.
So the voices of the parents and of the students cannot be left out of these decisions that are being made.
Solo porque no tienen acceso a una interpretación. Solo porque no tienen acceso a una interpretación buena.
Only because they may not have access to a proper interpretation or a good interpretation?
Hay muchos estudios que indican que cuando los padres participan en la escuela, el rendimiento de todos los niños en esa escuela tiende a mejorar.
There are many studies that show us that when parents participate in their kids' education, their kids', their academic functioning is going to be greater.
Para todos los niños.
For all the kids.
La variante del coronavirus es considerablemente más transmisible que la que enfrentamos el año pasado.
What's happening is that COVID is becoming even stronger than what we had to face last year.
Y no hay más requisito de distanzamiento o clases remotas.
And I haven't heard about the requirements of the safety distancing measures or I haven't learned that there is any remote learning classes.
Excuse me, Ms. Soto, if you could please wrap up.
Yes, I can send this in. I will send it in in Spanish and in English. But the language access was not appropriate here and I know there are some, you know, Spanish-speaking members that did probably understand what I was trying to say. But interpretation needs to be offered in a equitable and also it needs to be a quality interpretation. This is why I decided to do my testimony in Spanish today, although I speak fluent English. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. I will now activate the interpretation icon and all interpreters will be sent to your channels so you can begin interpreting again. Our next group of speakers is Mike Heischman, Nancy Lessin, John Mudd, Andrew Liff, Iliff, excuse me, and Sheri Kelleher. If you could all please raise your hands in Zoom. Mr. Heischman.
I think I did it right. Okay. Mike Heischman, Dorchester, Beja. I'm shocked that you still haven't recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day. This has been going on for years. What's going on here? This is not difficult. Thank you Commissioner Riley and the Board of DSS for all the damage that you have done to the BPS. A hole in the head would be preferable to a state takeover of our school system. How did you know that what we needed now during an ongoing pandemic? So how did you know that we needed to face a hostile test takeover? Don't we have enough on our plate in our efforts to bring more quality and equity into our school system? Do we need this distraction? Yes, the BPS has operated a dual system, an excellent education for a few, mostly white and privileged, and an inferior education for mostly low-income children of color. Yes, the BPS has fielded many of our children. However, the historical educational record in promoting quality and equity for the Commonwealth's public schools has been much worse. They have always provided sufficient resources for white wealthy communities at negligent treatment and funding for low-income communities of color. It is the Commonwealth that has given us charter schools and a racist standardized testing system. DSS has done great harm to many of our children, to their schools, and to our community. Putting our school system into receivership in the hands of the white racist power structure would be like putting the fox in charge of the chicken coop. DSS has a long history of taking over schools and entire school systems, including many schools in Boston. Their performance has been abysmal. The leadership of our city and school system is racially diverse. Progressive forces are moving forward so that our city can join the rest of the state and have an elected school committee. Our city has declared racism to be a public health. Our school system creates policies and practices with an equity lens. Commissioner Riley wants to be selected superintendent of schools in Boston. Wisely, he wasn't even a finalist. Mr. Riley is pissed. Mr. Commissioner, get over it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Lessin.
I'm Nancy Lessin, retired occupational health specialist, member of Mascosh Health Technical Committee, mother of a BPS high school teacher, grandmother of four BPS elementary school students. I live in Jamaica Plain. I have concerns about needed permanent ventilation filtration systems and heating-cooling systems to address airborne viruses and climate change, about CIC COVID testing, contact tracing and notification, bus transportation, lack of remote option, but I'll hone in on one, the need for outdoor meals. Nationwide, 5.9 million children have tested positive for COVID-19. The number of new cases is high, 850,000 over the last four weeks. Last week, children were over 26% of reported weekly cases. It's unknown how this virus harms children's long-term health. Boston is a CDC-designated high-transmission area. Many students are not in the weekly pool tests. Since summer, over one-third of all in Massachusetts infected with COVID have been fully vaccinated. While vaccination is important, additional protective measures are essential. The riskiest environment is indoor unmasked. The weak link in school reopening plans, how many spaces where children now eat even had air changes per hour tested. Last year, schools received large tents that stayed up for the season. Now, with Delta variant, more kids, more understaffing, schools got pop-up tents to put up and take down daily. While some schools now have children eat outside even without tents, many do not. I heard two phrases when discussing this with the BPS ombuds person. "We have to learn to live with the virus" and "The benefits of in-person learning outweigh the risks." Neither excuses BPS from failing to do what's needed to reduce COVID-19 transmission. COVID does not take a lunch break. BPS must immediately take COVID off the menu. Health and lives in our school community hang in the balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
Did I manage to get in? Okay. Okay. John Mudd, Cambridge, Massachusetts, member of the Boston Network for Black Student Achievement and the ELL Task Force. As you review what will no doubt be a sobering MCAS report on student performance and achievement gaps later tonight, I want you to be sure to take to heart the article in Tuesday's Boston Globe on teacher diversity. Naomi Martin's article shows both the positive human impact that teacher diversity can have on students and schools, as well as the continuing failure of BPS to make significant progress in this area. The article quotes some of us who have followed this issue for decades. Miren Uriarte, your former colleague when the school committee, says this issue of teacher diversity is a question of priorities and the BPS pays only lip service to it. Teacher diversity must be a priority that pervades the system if we are ever to see systemic change. That means that teacher diversity must be highlighted as a priority by you as a school committee, by the superintendent. It can't just be left to the Office of Human Capital and school leaders. Barbara Fields highlights the issue of principal accountability. There are hopeful steps that have been taken by the BPS School Division to improve principal accountability through the use of justification forums for failing to promote district diversity. But teacher diversity must also be included as a key component in principal evaluations and in the evaluations of their supervisors, the school superintendents. Finally, there's the issue of scale that I quoted as emphasizing. Boston has many innovative teacher development and pipeline programs, but they are producing very small numbers of new diverse teachers in classrooms. I saw in the article, there's now been an allocation of about $1 million of ESAR funds annually to improve teacher diversity. That is not in any of the original proposals and is to be applauded. But as good as that is, how will it be used and is it enough? Are we laying the groundwork that will be needed to improve student performance and overcome achievement gaps with the urgency that this calls for? Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Iliff.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, my name is Andrew Iliff. I'm a resident of Jamaica Plain and a parent at Mission Hill School and Boston Latin Academy. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee this evening. Two weeks ago, parents at Mission Hill School demanded that you immediately provide written confirmation to honor the autonomy of the Mission Hill School Governing Board's authority as a pilot school to begin the search and selection of new leadership at the school, to meet special education compliance within one week for all students affected by Boston Public Schools' decision to remove classroom teachers and to hire two highly qualified full-time teachers within one month to replace the ones BPS decided to remove. These demands have yet to be met. During my family's first five years at Mission Hill School, I was a fairly active parent. I participated in parent council when I could, supported our annual book sale, joined classroom activities. But I avoided a leadership role, partly due to the time commitment while we had a new baby, my daughter who just started at Mission Hill in kindergarten. But much more because in my experience, the school was thoughtfully navigating the challenges of a highly diverse, full-inclusion student body. As a white parent, I was wary of the distorting effect that my privilege might have and hoped to work on being a responsible ally within the vibrant school community. Things have changed. This week, I'm running to join the Mission Hill Governing Board. I would prefer not to take on this role, but thanks to the superintendent's actions in suspending skilled and qualified teachers with no staffing plans to compensate for their loss, our school is in crisis. Our governing board has been put in a position of having to fight to preserve the founding principles and commitments of our school and my conscience won't let me sit on the sidelines. Having benefited immensely from Mission Hill School, from its diversity, its democratic principles and its restorative justice practices, I have to do what I can to keep them in place for my daughter who's in kindergarten and all the current and future Mission Hill students. If you, as the school committee, care about diversity, democracy, justice, and honoring the district's commitments to our community, you, the members of the school committee, must act now to respond to the demands of Mission Hill parents or sit idly while our school is dismantled. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri Kelleher, followed by Yavielis Figaroa, Monica Bordita, Alan Tien, Charlie Kim, Ruby Reyes, and Edith Bazil. If you could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Sheri Kelleher.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheri Kelleher. Can you, I think you can see me. Lovely dog. My name is Sheri Kelleher. I'm a resident of Charlestown. I have a student at Boston Latin and I have a student at the Warren Prescott. I kind of feel like Dan Shaughnessy doing a round the horn here, but I have questions about ventilation, learning loss, ESAR, improving schools at the elementary school level, the Scholar-Athletes Program that's been discontinued, updates on the exam schools, MCAS, and potentially eliminating public comment or limiting public comment, starting with ventilation. I understand that we didn't have students in schools last year when it was at its coldest. But right now, we have open windows, lack of heat, and kids getting rained on. And want to know from a policy perspective whether BPS is intending to upgrade dress codes, address this, how this is going to be handled so that when we get to the bitterest, coldest months in January and February, our kids can feel safe but also not die from the cold, especially since there are some equity issues involved as well. In terms of learning loss, I have yet to hear a district-wide plan on how to address that. I understand that you're talking about academies in February and April. Woo! What about now? What's being done at the district level to try and address learning loss for all of the students who missed out so much over the last 15 to 18 months? And I'd also like to understand why ESAR funding is being handled at the school level and not the district level to address some of the real systemic problems that we have. In terms of improving the schools, I have yet to hear a concrete plan on how we're going to address and improve things so that exam schools are possible for everyone, as well as providing high school opportunities for everyone, not a select few. We love BLS. We'd love more people to be able to enjoy it. Quite frankly, there's three good schools and that's not enough. The Scholar-Athlete Program was discontinued. What are you guys doing to replace it, to again, improve attendance and help other students? I don't understand why updates are now being back behind public comment as opposed to right after the superintendent's report. And I also understand that there are some people who feel like there's too much public comment. My answer to that is, many of the committee members have been there for a long time, as well as the administration. And quite frankly, it's only because of remote school meetings that we're allowed to attend and provide comment on what we think is abysmal performance. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate everything that everyone does. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yavielis Figaroa.
Mama, mommy. Hi, good evening.
Evening.
So I am a former student at Mission Hill and my brothers were currently there and they were transferred due to the bullying and the threats that were made to them in our family. And I would like to know, like what is going on, what have they done about it?
Ms. Figaroa, we do have your contact information and someone from the superintendent's staff can follow up with you offline to have a conversation.
All right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Monica Bordita. Monica?
Sorry. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your work, first of all. I will read my comments just for the sake of time. I want to make sure that I have the two minutes to express my ideas. I'm an educator, a parent, and an immigrant that chose to settle in Boston because of the role of culture and education in this city. I would like to share a few ideas and comments with this committee and again, thank you for your work. I agree with the goal of elevating the overall quality of the Boston Public School District across all schools and grades. I support the idea of integrating children in the school environment as much as possible. I believe in education as an engine of democracy, equality, and well-being for everyone. However, with reference to the BPS exam school policy, I still do not understand the following, and I would... I still do not understand the following, and I would like to know more about this. First, how do you explain the 10 extra points that would exclude children of just a few BPS schools? I don't want to make names, but we know who we're talking about. As a superintendent, will you meet with these students that are most impacted by the reform to explain your vision and their options to access good public education in Boston? How do you explain that the new admission policy is fair to them? In the narrative of the school committee, I hear words like white supremacy and privilege. Instead, I would prefer the adoption of a win-win model rather than seeing a group of children left behind. The eight socioeconomic tiers are still not clear. And this is my second point. I would appreciate more transparency around the data used to define this criteria. And finally, this is a more general comment from the point of view of the public administration, thinking about the effort of this current administration around EDI and public education that I appreciate. How do we explain the recent real estate development of the city that seems to go in a different direction, much less sustainable and inclusive? I see a big disconnect in terms of public policies. And again, I would like to understand more the global, more systemic vision around this. Thank you so much, and thank you again for your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Tien.
Good evening, respectful committee member and superintendent. I live in Vassaroxbury, parent of two kids, buying BLS. The other one is a sixth grader waiting to join the exam school. So I have a question. I know there will be a simulation, a presentation afterwards. My daughter, we are living in Vassaroxbury in Zomay. My daughter is in a school that's not in a part of the school status with 10 bonus points. So it's a general question. It's for my daughter, she's the top in the class. OP, OP, O-A plus, it's in all her subjects. And doing well in everything. But she, unfortunately, in a school that results in bonus points. It's, she still have a chance to go to exam school, any exam school. So it's a, this is also the question I'm asking for a lot of other parents that in the same situation. So based on the current policy, the school without the 10 bonus points have zero chance. Any kids in the class, no matter how good, how bad, how good they are, have a zero chance to go to the exams, exam school, any exam schools. I think that's not, that's not fair. So can superintendent just assure us we can resolve this issue? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlie Kim.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi. Charlie Kim, resident of the North End and parent of two BPS students. I come tonight as a board member of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, SPEDPAC. SPEDPAC is required under Massachusetts General Law. We advise the district on matters pertaining to education and safety of students with disabilities. That is over 11,000 students, or approximately one quarter of the population of BPS. The Massachusetts General Law, however, stops short of granting SPEDPAC the ability to hold the district accountable. That responsibility falls on this body, the school committee. On May 26, 2021, SPEDPAC presented to this committee, "BPS Compliance Failures and Open Items." I come today to sadly report that over a month into this academic year, the compliance failures and open items have dramatically grown. There are unfilled positions for ABA specialists and one-to-one paraprofessionals, leaving our children unable to access school curriculum. Over 60% of COVID compensatory services meetings are not complete. The Department of Academics is operating in its third year without a special education strategic plan. And there appears to be over $50 million of CARES and ESRS funds earmarked for special education unaccounted for. Where is the chief internal audit executive this committee approved for hire on March 27, 2019 to account for this money? Right now, I personally believe we, parents, have exhausted all local administrative remedies. This leaves us with the only option but to use DESI's Problem Resolution System, or PRS. I'm pretty sure the next time the DESI board discusses receivership of BPS, if over 11,000 PRS reports flood in, the receivership conversation will be in-depth. So in closing, I ask you, Madam Chair, how will your committee hold BPS accountable for the special education open items? Or should we, parents, proceed with PRS filings? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. On Monday, Beja hosted a town hall with parents, students, and educators exploring the continued growing needs of reopening. Parents talked about the ongoing bus issues of receiving last-minute notifications that they would not, that they would have to figure out how to get their child home from school. Families receive an automated call at 1:00 PM, giving them only a few hours to find alternative ways of getting their child home. There are no solutions suggested or alternate resources being provided. For some families, what BPS uses as an inconvenience means loss of employment and/or income for working families. At the Beja Town Hall, we were also joined by president of the Bus Drivers Union, who shared that a main issue is the design of the routes themselves. This is an issue that needs ongoing support with the bus drivers squarely at the table. Other parents talked about the need for better communication on contact tracing. Parents have received calls from the Boston Public Health Commission explaining that their child may have been in contact with a person who has tested positive for COVID. There is little direction or information being offered to families about what their next course of action should be, aside from taking their child to a COVID testing site and waiting to see what happens. Beyond the lagging needs of pandemic response, there is a need for central office to prioritize the fostering of parent and student involvement infrastructure and training. Family liaisons need to receive more training on how to support parent leadership development so they can ensure parent council, school site council work, and student governance is fostered and supported. This will streamline communication. Decision-making at the school level is vital to a thriving school community, and cultivating trust is largely based on how you are implementing the solutions parents are providing. But that leadership development has to happen at the school level, and it is currently not. The revised BPS Code of Conduct does not use restorative justice as an overall cultural shift across the district. Restorative justice requires a commitment on the part of central office in order to create full community shifts. That won't happen unless it is prioritized by leadership. Restorative justice cannot be used as an afterthought or an inserted paragraph. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind our speakers to please speak at a slower pace for our interpreters. Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazil, followed by Marcy Carmody, Avery Salmyardereus, Sarah Horsley, and Sharon Hinton. If you could all please raise your hands in Zoom. Edith Bazil.
Thank you so much. My name is Edith Bazil. When public education was founded in 1635, Black people in Massachusetts were enslaved. We were enslaved for another 150 years. In 1783, Quack Walker, an enslaved African, sued his owner for his freedom. Despite desegregation, Black students continued to fight for racial and educational equity in BPS. Black students are assigned to under-resourced, understaffed, underfunded, segregated schools, and BPS fails to hire and retain Black educators despite a court order. During desegregation, BPS created the McKinley Schools, four separate special education therapeutic schools for students with emotional impairments. Black males comprise the highest population and face the harshest treatment. One in five McKinley students is suspended, and Black males are incarcerated in DYS and numbers that far exceed other populations. I hear no urgency or action plan for Black students. Meanwhile, white policymakers craft a BPS plan and code of conduct, freely ignoring the crisis at the McKinley Schools, which makes a total mockery of the racial equity tool. Black educators, whom research affirms get better results, are restricted from impacting real change. They are dismissed, ignored, or set up in possible working conditions with no power. Some leave. Not surprising, Black families in Boston also seek alternatives to BPS. Here are four recommendations for immediate change. One, construct a Black agenda to address the historical racialized trauma inflicted upon Black students prior to, during, and in the aftermath of Boston's desegregation, including racial barriers that continue to impact Black families and whole communities intergenerationally. Two, hire and retain Black educators, including central office staff, who have the power to make change. Three, create an equity infrastructure with the power to enforce and use the racial equity tool and apply consequences and build inclusive school communities. And finally, I echo what my friend Charlie Kim said. I additionally state, enlist a highly qualified special education leader with lived experience and a proven track record of success to ensure Black students are not misclassified, segregated, miseducated, and dumped into settings that gaslight them into the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you. This district will not improve until you do right by Black students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bazil. Our next speaker is Marcy Carmody.
Thank you, Boston School Committee and the superintendent, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Marcy Carmody. I reside in Charlestown and have three children in BPS schools. I'm here to continue to draw attention to the transportation issues that plague BPS even after a month into school. I was disappointed to see no new transportation data in the superintendent's report this evening. In the superintendent's report from the last meeting, she showed data that 82% of buses arrived on time in the morning. What about the afternoon buses? Data. Also, in terms of attendance, was 89% for the first 2,700 students. Maybe some of them BPS, but are 5,000 of them? The bus that never comes? 500? How would we know? How many kids is too many? Is the data. We are a month into school and continue to have buses that are not coming. I also want to talk about my oldest son, who was on the Boston Latin Academy. He has door-to-door busing on his IEP. He has had at least five morning bus no-shows. I think that the exam schools being diverse leads to richness in learning. Part of that diversity is being inclusive, special education students. My son is one of those students. Do this year and in future years. If he and other students like him cannot get to school, we are setting them up to fail. He is really enjoying BLA. Miss, I did not come. And is absolutely central to learning. If a child cannot get to school and not learn, they can't get their foot in the door because their bus did not show up. We have failed that for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avery Salmyardereus.
Hello?
Good evening.
Last meeting, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Last meeting, I spoke about my family's experience at Mission Hill School. And this meeting, I would like to express that I do not pretend to speak for everyone. I realize that each family's experience is different, and I am very proud of the diversity of opinions and experiences shared here this time and last time, because good leadership requires discussion. As a teacher in BPS for 11 years, I worked in schools where it was not uncommon to find students having sex in the hallway, poop on the walls, and weapons. These are serious incidences, but very rarely did the superintendent's office become involved in any of them. So let's be real. The delayed investigation of a family's very real and painful experience seems to be of opportunistic timing to the continued dismantling of an autonomous school. Is that about control? Is sameness more important than democracy? Last meeting, you were rightfully proud of events celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. But when you remove the freedom of choice, curriculum design, and autonomy from their teachers, you show my Latina children that being quiet and controlled is more important than their actions and ideas. Democratically-run institutions may be messy, but our children need to learn how to participate in them if they are to participate in our society. Then again, that might not be your point of view, considering you are an appointed committee. Let's remember that the only elected member of the school committee is not allowed to vote. For Mission Hill, democracy is central. I, along with other parents, demand that you honor in writing our autonomy to choose our next leader, along with replacing staff that your committee has removed. Ms. Mercer, please keep up the good work. You are the voice of 54,000 children. Thank you for the opportunities to speak.
Thank you. Sarah Horsley and Sharon Hinton are not signed into this meeting, so we'll move on to our next set of speakers. Mano Katso Panakis, Sarah Wharton, Bonnie McBride, Amy Wyeth, and Andy Crow. If you could all please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Mano?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Mano Katso Panakis, and I am a proud father of two incredible BPS students. Two went to a, to a public school, not here in the United States, in Greece where I grew up. There, you, you go to the school that is assigned to you based on your address. And usually, if you live in a city or a town, it's walking distance. Coming from that, you can imagine my surprise when I overheard parents discussing high schools at my then-two-year-old son's preschool holiday party. To this day, I still joke around with those, a couple of those parents, good friends now, about those comments. And our kids are 12 years old. All these years, I have been asking the same question. Why are we only talking about three schools? It was so nice to hear you say the same thing a few weeks ago, Madam Chair. There are over 26,000 students in grade 6 to 12 of BPS. The three schools that everyone is talking about are counting for 6,000. The three schools that everyone is talking about are counting for six thousand of them. That's twenty thousand kids that go to schools that no one that has been complaining to you, giving testimony the last year and a half about exam schools, seems to want to send their kids to. All those unhappy, angry, disappointed parents aren't complaining about not being able to go to the infamous BLS, BLA, and O'Briens. They're complaining because they feel that they don't have a better option. I'm going to read a quote by our Superintendent Dr. Casellis. "The pandemic spurred a remarkable collective response to support our community and reminded us of the value of our relationships with our students, families, and each other." So I ask you, Madam Chair, committee members, Dr. Casellis, let's shift the conversation to where the real problem is. And when the community is knocking on your door with solutions, please open the door and listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Wharton.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Wharton. I'm a BPS parent of two kids. We live in the North End. My eldest is in third grade, and my younger son is in K-2. For the past three years, I've been involved locally at our school. And we've been so lucky to be at a school that gives our students what they need to excel. My husband and I are big advocates for public schooling, and we felt like we won the lottery, maybe better Powerball, honestly, when our eldest got a seat at Boston Public Schools for K-2, and we were lucky enough to get placed at the Elliott. And then that knowledge let us know that our younger son would be able to follow, and we could plan and invest in our future and our community in the city. It's a city synonymous with educational excellence. It's far past time that we take the discussion over the few precious seats at the exam schools and step back to look at the larger picture for the tens of thousands of high schoolers, as the parent just ahead of me had mentioned. We embrace the achievements of the exam schools, but we must also bring the other existing high schools up to the high standards that all of our students deserve, so that it does feel like there are more options for all of those tens of thousands. It's time to look at the schools of all levels that have turned around, that have delivered results, and look at what has worked to try and reinvent the high schools and help our students succeed in new ways. A true pleasure of our experience at the Elliott is that we're an inclusion school. That real-life exposure of varying personalities and abilities breeds a compassion and understanding that we can all agree is we need much more of in the world today. Discovering there's only one inclusion high school in the BPS system was such a disappointment for us. And I'm voicing a very strong hope that by the time my young sons are taking their next steps out of the Elliott, that's no longer the case, and we have more inclusion high schools to offer. We have vibrant communities and vibrant parent communities in all of our public schools at BPS. And we often share between each other informally, trying to help each other's schools as much as any involved parent can. But when it comes down to it, we need deep innovation to come from these power structures that you all are involved in to make the actual large changes. Let's begin to move forward in new waves to give all of our high school students excellent choices they deserve for their years. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie McBride.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Bonnie McBride, and I am the teacher librarian at Fenway High School. Over the past seven years, I have come to testify before school committee each time when librarians and library power positions were being cut. I am overjoyed that tonight I am here to speak in support of the Library Services Strategic Plan, which will transform library services for our students and the district. Thank you to Dr. Froggett for tirelessly championing library services and to Dr. Casellis for recognizing the importance of libraries and librarians, and finally, bringing equity to the district in terms of library services. I want to stress that while classroom libraries and the public library branches have a role to play, they cannot and should not be used as substitutes for school libraries. A staffed, well-stocked, curated, culturally-relevant school library has thousands of books at all reading levels, all topics, and with an emphasis on supporting each school's curriculum. A school library is more than just a collection of books, though I will proudly share that my three hundred and eighty-nine students at Fenway High have already checked out over one thousand books in less than a month of school. The teacher librarian in the library is an essential instructor of information literacy and digital literacy, making sure that our students are prepared for college, career, and life. These digital literacy skills have shown to be more important than ever with the rapid spread of misinformation. I will close with sharing an interaction I had just the other day with one of our freshmen. This student, on his very first visit to the library, was adamant that he hated reading. He is now in the library multiple times a week checking out graphic novels. And he shared the other day that he thinks, actually, he does like to read. And he told me he had never been in a school with a library before, so he never had a chance to find the books he actually enjoys. I'm looking forward to all BPS students getting a chance, he is, to experience a school library. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Wyeth.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Okay, great. You can hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, my name's Amy Wyeth. I am the co-chair of the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers High School Parent Council. I've spoken to this committee before, and I really appreciate all of you listening to the comments from myself and many people from the school who've spoken to you about the new building or our need for a new building. And I just wanted, I'm here because I wanted to share a couple of stories now that I've actually been inside this building at the Endicott School, which is temporarily housing our eleventh and twelfth graders. And I do hopefully think that it's going to be temporary. The first story is I had to go to the building for a meeting earlier this week. So this was my first time into the building. And the meeting was with one of the school deans. And we unfortunately had to wait several minutes for a space to meet because he informed me he doesn't have his own office. So when we finally did get into an office, the office had walls that did not extend to the ceiling. So even though it was a meeting on a private subject, it was something that could be heard throughout, you know, for anyone who happened to be standing on the other side of the wall. This was also an issue in the former Northeastern building. The second little story I'll share is that I did speak with a teacher who knows me through the parent council, who told me that her, she said, the teachers really, if you give them more ability to prepare, they will do better. And she said, right now, I'm preparing my lessons in a broom closet with a mop literally next to me as I'm sitting there preparing my lessons. And the third story I just would like to share is that my son has told us that he, since the start of the school year, has witnessed two crimes in this neighborhood. One where a kid was hit by a car, which I think you might have heard of. It was because it was in the news. And the other where he said it was a mugging, and someone got mugged for his moped. So, you know, I know that's, there's a number of neighborhoods in Boston that aren't terribly safe, but it kind of is upsetting when you hear this kind of story from your child, and then you see the school. And by the way, there's no library in this school. And I totally support the librarian who just spoke. It's great, wonderful, would be wonderful for the EMK students to have a library and space for their health-assisted classes. And so I would just continue to ask that you please do everything you can as a school committee to pull out the stops and help us fund the, find, sorry, the building that we need for all of our students and for the long term. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our final speaker for general public comment is Andy Crowe.
Hello? I'm Andy Crowe, parent of two at the Mission Hill School. I live in West Roxbury. And I wrote a poem that I'd like to read. Ms. Kleta, Ms. Gennara, Ms. Jerrilyn, Nakia. Four talented teachers. We see you. We appreciate you. We love you. We feel for you. Four talented teachers who answered the call of caring as their duty and who have performed it with acuity. Twenty-four years of spreading democracy, meeting kids' needs through autonomy. Art, music, theme studies for creativity. For your dedication to empower our children, we thank you humbly. Four talented teachers ripped apart from our community. The powers that be act with immunity, impunity. Is it naivete, sloth, or acting criminally? Will they get due process? We'll see. Answers remain a mystery. Three of the four teachers dismissed are black, a disservice to our town. See this? It's a frown. I raise an objection. BPS, wrong direction. Kids need to see their own complexion. To the four talented teachers, I understand the travesty that's happening to you and thus, the Mission Hill community too. A few squeaky wheels bulldozing through. Does BPS have a clue? Do you get the ramifications of what you do? In the least, your response is negligent. At the most, justice is well overdue. Superintendent Casellis and the school committee, I'm looking to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first action item this evening is an in-kind donation from the Lang Lang Foundation of twenty-six keyboards and accessories with a total estimated value of fifty thousand dollars. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Any questions? None. Superintendent, can somebody just give us a quick, brief update on how this donation came to be and how it will be ultimately used?
I believe Chief Cooter can update the committee on that. He's on. Someone from his app, let me check. I'll have to get back to Ms. Robinson.
Okay, thank you. I just know how important having the arts to our schools at all levels are, and this is, you know, quite a wonderful donation. So thank you very much for making sure that this can happen. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve this grant.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Colongo Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our next action item this evening is grants for approval totaling seven hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I will now open it up to committee for questions and comments. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Colongo Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Great, thank you. I just want to let everyone know that I've pulled the action item of the revised BPS Code of Conduct from the agenda tonight. There's still a few questions and feedback that we're asking the district to incorporate, and they're working to incorporate that. And we will bring this item back before you at a future meeting. Moving on, our final action item is the Library Services Strategic Plan, covering the period from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six. You will recall that our last meeting, Dr. Dead Froggett, Director of Library Services, presented the plan to expand library services opportunities for all students. I will now invite the superintendent to give any final comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can tell, I am extremely excited about library services and having a library at every BPS public school. As you heard from the public commenter and the librarian from Fenway today, how just important it is, and from our own Ms. Mercer, and how it sparked her imagination and has really set her up for success. It is, a library is bigger than just books. A library is where kids go, where communities can gather, where their teachers find materials and support. And it's just a hub of literacy within the school community. And so, just really excited about this opportunity. You will see further investments in librarians in the FY23 budget when I bring it forward for review.
Wonderful. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Is there any? Hearing none, I will entertain a vote. Oh, sorry.
But just real quickly, Superintendent, I just want to reiterate, I am supportive of this. I also encourage you, as I said last week, and I know you are, to really think about how, to avoid funding pitfalls on the ESF funding and that we work the library, the increases in salaries into the regular budget. I just feel an obligation to make sure to say that for the record. I also feel it important to say that I really appreciated the librarian from the Fenway School who spoke this evening and said that her students had already checked out a thousand books so far this year. And I just, that brought the biggest smile to my face hearing that. So, and look forward to hearing that in many, many more of our schools because of these actions.
Mr. O'Neill, to the school committee, I want to assure you that I am thinking about sustainability with the budget. You know, I shared before that it is our operations budget that is the ongoing expenses. However, ESF does allow for us to build an infrastructure and to buy the collections that we need, to buy the shelving that we need, to buy the printers and the checkout systems, and all the things that would make a librarian, and possibly even some facility changes. I'd love to see us partner with a business and adopt a library type of program. But in the FY23 ongoing budget, as you know, we have thirty-six million dollars left of the one hundred million dollar commitment from the of the one hundred million dollar commitment from the city in our three-year budget. It is within there that we will purchase the librarians. And so, that's where we plan to put in the staffing costs.
It's wonderful.
This is also true of athletics. So, you know, you see in the ESSR budget, the athletic increases. We had a testifier earlier talking about athletics. We plan on ramping up our athletics. Avery has brought forward an incredible expansion of our athletics for students. This is one of the things students said that they wanted. And we will pay for coaches and the ongoing costs, but we'll upgrade our athletic materials and equipment with ESSR, with ESSR funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Library Services Strategic Plan twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. DeRouge?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The emotion, the motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first report this evening is the district's twenty-twenty-one MCAS results. At this time, I'd like to invite Monica Hogan, BPS Senior Executive Director, Office of Data and Accountability, to please present her report. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to provide some opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just thank Monica Hogan and the entire Office of Data and Accountability for their work under Chief Mitchell. Also, for their summaries that they'll be providing this evening. I do want to just speak to the caution of interpreting these results, given some of our students took it remotely, some of our students took it in person, and also the fact that the test was different than in prior years because it was shortened. I know that Ms. Hogan will share with you all of these limitations of the, of the test itself. And even within all of that, the results show that we have some work to do and that some of our students suffered more than others. And so, we will continue to work on our academic recovery plan, our ESSR investments, and our operational supports that we put in place for our students, both their social, emotional well-being, as well as their academic success. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Superintendent. And thank you, school committee members. I want to start with adding some additional context to what the superintendent just shared around the changes that were made to the MCAS administration this year. So first, students in grades three through eight took only one session of the MCAS assessment. Approximately half took session one and half took session two. Students in these grades were also permitted to take the MCAS remotely if they were learning at home rather than in person. Students in grade ten were required to take the MCAS in person due to the competency determination graduation requirement. Unlike in grades three through eight, the test in grade ten was not shortened. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also shared that the intention of the twenty-twenty-one MCAS administration was to provide diagnostic data and not high-stakes accountability. Because of this, there are no accountability determinations being made this fall. Additionally, the eighth-grade science results are incomplete and do not include students who tested remotely. That data has been withheld by the state. And finally, one of the measures we look at is student growth from year to year. DESI has changed the methodology for calculating student growth. This new approach allows schools and districts to better estimate the impact of conditions during the pandemic on student learning and progress. This does mean that it is challenging to compare growth from twenty-twenty-one to growth from previous years. So I'll start with a high-level summary. Approximately ninety-one percent of students in grades three through eight participated in the ELA MCAS. And approximately seventy percent of students in grade ten participated in ELA MCAS. This slide shows the percentage of students in each achievement level by grade level. The line on each bar that is gray color shows the percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations in twenty-nineteen. The percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in twenty-twenty-one ranged from a high of forty-five percent at grade ten to a low of thirty percent in grades seven and eight. And in general, fewer students met or exceeded expectations in twenty-one, with grades four and ten maintaining the same level of performance. This shot slide shows the same graph, but for math results. Similar participation in math with ninety-one percent of students in grades three through eight participating and sixty-eight percent of grade-ten students participating. However, student performance declined much more in math than ELA, which is consistent with statewide trends. The percentage of students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations ranged from a high of thirty-eight percent in grade-ten to a low of seventeen percent in grade four. The larger drops were in the elementary grade levels. And similar to ELA, grade-ten's decrease was not as large as what was experienced in grades three through eight. Wanted to share a little statewide contextual data before we dive deeper into Boston's results. So as I mentioned, performance declines for Boston were not as large as what was experienced in other urban districts in the state. For example, the proportion of grade-three-through-eight students meeting or exceeding standards in ELA decreased by four percentage points for Boston and was the smallest decline of the seven largest districts in the state. Was also lower than the statewide decline of six percentage points. Additionally, we wanted to provide an update on the school committee's goals. As you'll recall, in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, the school committee set goals in five student outcome areas. Two of those goals were measured by the MCAS performance. So that is achievement for students with disabilities and critical thinking in math, science, and literacy. Consistent with the data we just looked at, performance on each goal was lower than the baseline data from twenty-nineteen. For achievement for students with disabilities, about twenty-eight percent of students with disabilities had an ELA student growth percentile of fifty or higher, and twenty-two percent in math. As a reminder, DESI did change the SGP calculation, which resulted in fewer groups seeing an SGP of fifty or higher. This table also shows the average scaled score for ELA math and science in grade eight. Now we'll go a little deeper into the grades-three-through-eight results. So this slide shows you data for grades three through eight in ELA for all grade levels and all major student groups, displaying both average scaled score and mean SGP. As a reminder, an average scaled score of five hundred indicates that on average, students in that group are scoring meeting or exceeding expectations. The ELA scaled score decreased by about four-point-five scaled score points, with all major student groups experiencing declines. The smallest decline for students with disabilities of two-point-seven points and the largest decline for English learners of eight-point-seven points. We also saw the average SGP decrease to thirty-three-point-four. This number was similar to the average state SGP, which was thirty-five-point-eight. Similarly, there were declines in the math achievement and SGP, but again, larger than in ELA. Math achievement for all students decreased by ten-point-five scaled score points. Again, the trend for all major student groups was a decline with the smallest decline again for students with disabilities and the largest decline for English learners. The SGP again declined to twenty-six-point-eight compared to the statewide average of thirty-point-four. This slide shows grades five and eight, science. Science is only assessed in grades five, eight, and high school. These declines were more similar to ELA with a decrease of four-point-three scaled score points. All student groups again experienced a decline. As a reminder, these scores are not complete because the grade-eight remote testing results were not released by the state. We'll move into grade-ten. The grade-ten ELA MCAS results were more mixed than what was seen in grades three through eight with a decline of only point-four scaled score points. As a reminder, students were not permitted to take the grade-ten test remotely, so the participation rate was lower in grade-ten. The grade-ten ELA SGP saw a slight increase to, up to forty-seven, which is comparable to the state's fifty-two-point-five SGP. And in grade-ten math, we again saw all student groups seeing a decrease between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-one. And a large decrease in SGP down to thirty-five-point-one, which is again comparable to the state's SGP of thirty-six-point-five. Now going to pass it over to Deputy Superintendent Drew Eccleston to share a little bit about what we are doing as a result of these data.
Thank you, Monica, for presenting this information, your analysis with your colleagues. I want to share my personal sort of opinion that there is significant work, obviously, after hearing this data. We have, we have work to do as a system to ensure that all of our students are provided access to a high-quality, excellent, and equitable education. And I take personal responsibility, along with the team members and the academics team, to work to, to very quickly ramp up to support our schools to ensure that our students get what they need, both academically and socially. I look forward to bringing forward an academic plan in an upcoming meeting to talk about the work of the academics department in collaboration with schools to deliver on this promise. In the short term, I wanted to share details around what we're doing to respond to this data in real time. First, it is essential that we continue to do more work to ensure that all of our students feel connected to schools. I appreciate the superintendent's leadership in working to ensure resources so that all of our schools, as a quality assurance, have access to full-time social workers and a full-time liaison across every school in the BPS. Promising work out of our Hub School Initiative, which is rethinking the way that instruction is offered across the BPS in hub schools, as well as ensuring that students have real-time academic, mental health, access to healthcare, and other resources in their school as part of wraparound services is an exciting initiative that we're excited to ramp up as part of our ESSR initiatives and investments, as well as the work that we're doing currently in the BPS at many of our hub schools. We also have to ensure that our students are getting access to the academic supports they need. In real time, we have to work extremely hard to partner with schools to ramp up to ensure that the tier-one instruction that all students are being accessed, that have access to, are aligned to the standards at the grade level. We also have to work to individualize and customize specific plans for students to help identify exactly the starting point for students and ensure that our teachers and our educators and our principals have the data that they need to develop and implement intervention plans for students. This includes the rollout of a plan this week, an initiative this week, of access to the Paper Organization, which is an organization which provides twenty-four-seven tutoring support aligned with the BPS curriculum instruction. In addition, we will continue to invest and increase the number of tutoring options that are available to students after school as well as outside of school time. We'll be monitoring student progress with, through the administration of the math growth assessment in both reading and math, which the window for that has now opened and results are coming back. And we'll be sharing those not only with our educators and developing those customized intervention plans for students, but also ensuring that that information is being shared with families at home so they have, so that our families have real-time information about student progress. To the point that I made earlier about access to high-quality tier-one instruction, we've allocated two-point-eight million dollars on instructional materials and professional development, most specifically to ensure that the implementation of our Equitable Literacy Project is moving forward and is putting complex grade-level text at the center of- and is putting complex grade-level text at the center of our work as well as ensuring that every day our students have access to reading, writing, and talking from complex text. As you heard last week, Dr. Froggett explained her work to increase access to libraries across the system, which we see as a real strategy to help accelerate academic outcomes for students as well as increase access to new culturally relevant, high-quality texts. In addition, we'll be offering additional time for high-quality learning, most particularly and especially for our multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, and multilingual learners with disabilities. This includes access to Acceleration Academies during the February and April vacation as well as including full-time summer options that, that include full-day summer options that include both academic enrichment opportunities that the superintendent and I are promising the community to deliver on. We'll certainly take questions that you have about this, as well as I look forward to sharing a more thorough update on the academic plan in the weeks to come.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to questions from the committee. Could you please give me a virtual? And thank you. We'll start with Ms. Marissa.
Oh, thank you for the presentation. So my first question was, was the 10th grade test not shortened due to the graduation requirement?
That's correct. The state for this class of 10th graders has not changed the graduation requirement, and so the test was the full length.
So my follow-up question to that is, why was the MCAS still taken in a pandemic while students were still learning mostly remote and there was a chance of learning loss?
That's a great question. We are, we were required to administer the MCAS by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the rationale that was shared was wanting to better understand across the Commonwealth the impact of the pandemic on student learning. And so that was a decision that the, the State Department made that of, that we needed to give the MCAS and the changes in administration that were possible. So they tried to make it more accessible by allowing grades three through eight to take the test remotely and shortening the length for grades three through eight as well.
So another question that I have is, why was it taken as a graduation requirement rather than a MAP test to see where students were, where students are compared to the previous classes to see where students are lacking?
At the graduation requirement of the MCAS is again a state requirement. So students are required to take the MCAS in order to graduate. However, this past year, if a student was learning remotely and chose not to come in for the MCAS in grade 10, they will have the opportunity this fall to take the MCAS, and that will be considered their first time taking the test and therefore will qualify them for the scholarship opportunities that the MCAS offers, which is the Adams Scholarship, which is a portion of in-state tuition at a number of Massachusetts schools.
Thank you. Another question that I have is, why was the decline in math so high?
That's a great question, and I will, I will start, and Dr. Eccleston or Dr. Casillas, feel free to join in. The way math content is taught, it is the, the sequence of topics. Depending on the grade level and area does not always build on each other the same way that ELA skills build on each other year over year. So students had, were more likely to miss certain content areas with the disruption due to COVID, which I think is one of the contributing factors around the decline in math versus the decline in ELA, but I will also defer. If Dr. Eccleston or Dr. Casillas would like to add anything.
It's a, it's a brilliant question. Thank you for that. I, I would agree with Ms. Hogan's analysis around sort of the standards and the content, sometimes not building on each other as well as it does in ELA, which makes it sort of more complicated. I would also add that the, the, at least my understanding of, of the MCAS historically has been that the vast majority of standards that are assessed in ELA come from three major standards, which are called key ideas and details. So sort of essentially the comprehension standards that are attached to ELA. In math, they're assessing a much broader range of standards, which are called major work of the grade. It's disproportionately focused on the major work of the grade standards. And my hypothesis would be that, given the sort of broader range of things that are being assessed, that that could have contributed to a decrease and a greater decrease in math outcomes compared to ELA.
I would only add that around teacher practice and teaching of mathematics, when you observe teachers teaching mathematics, particularly at the younger grade levels, they often use many manipulatives and tools to teach mathematics. They also are often clearing up confusion and turning to an entire remote model, I think quickly threw in into kind of question, teachers need to completely revamp how they taught the subject and their pedagogy, meaning their instruction, had to quickly shift. And therefore, students may have missed some content while teachers were learning how to convey to a Zoom room the ideas of, of mathematics.
Thank you. So my final question is, for the students that took the MCAS in a pandemic and failed, will they be able to retake the test?
Yep. So for high school students who failed the MCAS in 10th grade, they will have the opportunities to take the retest similar to how students have the opportunity to take the retest prior to COVID, which is typically, I think, four or five different opportunities in their four years of high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Dr. Hart and Dr. Coleman.
Well, normally I like to thank you, but this is such depressing, distressing news that this, we all know how awful this is. It's as bad, if not worse, than we expected. And I want to thank you for giving such a, you know, clear presentation on the disaster we're dealing with and how, and it's nice to know that given the state, we may not be fumely flawed behind, but we know what this means for kids' learning and loss and, and, and and the demands this puts on us going forward. And we can kind of hope for a false inflation jump because once they're back in school, they're going to do better, but it does speak to the, the risk that all people, all our kids are at. So I want to ask a couple of questions that are about the problem solving because we can, we can spend a lot of time on the problem, but we all know we have to look at, at the problem. So what one is, you know, what is the thinking about being more precise in understanding what we call achievement gaps? You know, we do a lot of comparison between demographic groups, which, you know, there are lots of arguments whether that's relevant, but is there another more functional standard? And part of my, my concern is, as we know, proficiency is an inadequate standard to have people being college and career ready. But I don't think we have a good definition between proficiency and advanced as to what we really need to know when we can really measure kids' gaps. As we're thinking forward about the data we're going to use to evaluate our progress, which is our job as a corporate, it's really saying, what, what, what's it going to look like so that we can look at the gaps and respond accordingly? So is, is, so you don't have an answer now, but I'm encouraging us to come up with that definition. And if there's some work being done on that already, I'd love to hear a little bit about it.
So I think there are a couple of questions there, Dr. Coleman, that I'll try and answer. So one with the shift from the, what we call the legacy MCAS to the next generation MCAS, the bar for proficient and advanced has changed to meeting or exceeding expectations. And those standards have been sent in a way to indicate college and career readiness as opposed to readiness for high school graduation, which is sort of how the legacy MCAS was thought about in terms of standard setting. So while not a perfect measure by any means, I do think that was some of the intention around the standard setting for MCAS that we can think about as we think about these measures. In relation to your gap question, by definition, you have to have sort of two groups to compare in order to determine a gap. And so I think there are a lot of different gaps we can think about. We can think about gaps between each student group and all students. We could think about the gap of groups in BPS and groups statewide. We will be administering the NAEP assessment this year in 2022. And so we'll be able to understand student performance in Boston compared to urban districts across the country, as well as large city districts across the country, and be able to better understand our performance there. So I think gap measuring is complex, and there are certainly a number of different ways that we can think about that, and I'm happy to do some more of that thinking and come back at a later meeting to talk through that in more depth.
I think I'd say my, my, my concern about using comparisons between groups is it, it doesn't account sufficiently for family wealth and its impact on learning and performance. Whereas a gap to what is the criteria reference for being college or career ready? And the gap to that is, is, is seems to me takes out that issue of family wealth as a significant contributor to the performances of some in our communities. Brenda, so I interrupted you.
No, I was just going to point out what Ms. Hogan said about the next generation MCAS and the previous tests that preceded the MCAS Next Generation and just how with every iteration of the test, the standards and the cut scores are risen. And so it gets harder and harder and harder for our students to pass these tests every time there's a new revision because typically the standard setting is going to a higher bar. And so, you know, I'm 54 years old. I, I'd never had.
Still young, so don't, don't, don't play, can't play that with me.
You know, it goes back to the, you know, SRA test that I used to take when I was a little girl. But, you know, which are, were more formative in, in nature. I think that we need to think about this. And when this cut score setting is happening at the state level to get to your point of wealth and access and opportunity and gaps and how far that leveling is set because they base it on the overall population of the entire state when they set these cut scores. And then when the commissioner gets the cut scores back, because I had to do this as commissioner, you see how it falls out for, you know, different racial groups and students with disabilities and your EL students, et cetera, homeless students. And, and then you have to set those cut scores.
Great. Thank you. My, my first five minutes up, I'll, I'll come back in my second round.
All righty. Do we have other members that have questions? Raise your hands. Yes. Okay. So you're now, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the, the data, and yes, it is quite sobering. A question that I have around the acceleration or the work being done to accelerate learning. I saw the pieces around the Acceleration Academies as well as full-time summer options. But I'm wondering, what is the thinking to address the current need that families have repeatedly told us around extended school time and after-school programming? And so I just, I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we're looking to address that now versus having to wait a whole nother school year in which we're continuously losing time that we can be spending with our children.
That's a really good question. And, you know, one of the things that parents said with the SR funding is they want to have before and after-school programs. And so we want to implement more before and after-school programs. And so I'll be working with Monica Roberts and her team and her successor as we plan out and expand our before and after-school programs and which partners we can work with on that. But we put in place additional funding for SR funding in order to get that going.
But is that something that we're looking to do for this school year? Or are we going into planning mode and expecting that to just really, in earnest, be implemented for next school year?
Well, in earnest and probably to scale, hoping for next year. But this year, we will have similar barriers with staffing. We have a number of paraprofessional staff we still need to hire. Obviously, all of these workers are hourly workers with extended day programs and before-day programs. I'm in conversations with the YMCA, Boston After School Beyond, and trying to figure out how we can, you know, stage up some sooner, especially with schools where we know it's really needed in terms of after-school and then doing like hoops and homework and other programs like that. But really, I think it's going to be a next-year initiative to, to really try to scale it if we can get the staffing for it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We are lucky in Boston to have so many amazing nonprofit partners who are in the communities doing this work. So I appreciate you looking at that option. The last piece that I want to mention, it's not so much a comment, but I suppose an observation. I think Ms. Mercer really had some great questions around the MCAS. And I think it is important to state that I really want us to think about how we're supporting all students, but particularly I'm concerned about those 10th graders last year, now juniors who did not pass the MCAS. As we all know, there were and are some real challenges to what students and families face. And as you just mentioned, Superintendent Casillas, especially around math, teachers basically had to adapt rapidly and rethink curriculum and their form of instruction in a far less than ideal state. And so to me, what I hear when, when I think, what I think when I hear that is it, many of our youth were tested on something that they weren't, in many cases, probably taught. And so that seems a bit unfair that this is going to be held against them as a graduation requirement. Now, I know that that's a state requirement, but I do think that it's important to voice that I think we're holding students to a standard of something that was out of their control and that they weren't necessarily provided with the resources to, I think, properly engage with the material.
I think that is accurate assessment. And I think that we, that's our challenge ahead with Dr. Eccleston to ensure we have a plan for every student and that they're able to succeed. I know our school leaders are working with their educators to look at their data, to dig into it, more so the, the formative data that we're seeing now and being able to get a better handle on where they're at right now after having a couple of months of instruction.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
One of the things you'll also see in the FY23 budget, since I'm talking so much about it this evening, is counselors. Because I think we're going to need academic counselors to support our students in, in high school, particularly middle to high school. And this is something that the chair has asked me to focus on.
Thank you. Mr. DeRusio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a kind of a follow-up question on English language learners and kind of just seeing that same did and seeing that that was, you know, even more significant. What is our understanding of, of, you know, why, you know, the why on that and how that influences, maybe some more specificity, the types of interventions we're going to do for English language learners? I know, I understand kind of the, the broad intervention, but I don't know if maybe Dr. Eccleston or this side has more, can shed more light on those, those interventions.
Well, I can just speak quickly to the barrier, and then I'll turn. Well, I can just speak quickly to the barrier, and then I'll turn it to Dr. Eccleston to speak more about the academic interventions that he has planned for EL learners. But I know for a fact that when we turned quickly, within a couple of days, to shut down school, it took us a while to get the computers out, and then it took a while to get Wi-Fi up. And, you know, so that families had access to the Wi-Fi and the computers. And then, of course, to try to do a Zoom room and have interpretation services and understanding, you know, there was a significant barriers for our EL learners in a remote environment. Just incredibly challenging pandemic experience for many of our EL learners. I'll let Drew speak about what he has planned for the EL learners.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think some of this is short-term and some of this is long-term. In the short term, we are prioritizing our investments that focus deeply on our multilingual learners and our multilingual learners with disabilities, as well as our students with disabilities. That will be evidenced through the investments that we'll make through Acceleration Academies, through tutoring options, and we'll be investing in schools in, in programs that are specifically focused on the needs of our, of our English learners, our multilingual learners, as well as our multilingual learners with disabilities and students with disabilities. So that is, that is the focus of the, of this, of, of the investments we're making relative to intervention work. We've invested in a large number of virtual tools, things like Lexia to support specifically our multilingual learners. These are sort of research-based intervention tools to really support our students. And in the long term, as we, you sort of, as we signaled in our, in our most recent EL Task Force meeting, I think there seems to be agreement from the district and from the EL Task Force to really increase access to native language instruction, particularly driving content through native language. I'm personally committed to that. The superintendent is personally committed to that. And we'll be working in, in the weeks and months to come with the task force to actually develop the infrastructure to support that, as well as ensuring that our equitable literacy plan not only focuses on equitable literacy, but also equitable bi-literacy across the system.
I appreciate that. And just a, just a reflection. You know, really thinking back to, to, to summer school, that we're going to have these resources, these programs, and ensuring that the families that really need it understand why their kids need it and that they have access to it. And I know that that's, you know, there's the challenges that, that, you know, we have as a district to, to make sure that families have it. There's societal issues, there's the nonprofit world and the community and so forth. But it sounds like, you know, we're going to have a lot of great programming, and we need to make sure families know that their kids need this, that they, they get that programming and that we, we track that and learn from our experience, more limited experience, you know, in, in, in summer school, so.
And we have increased our communication to families, our interpretation services. You know, the public commenter, we are trying to make sure that it is high quality. Also, interpretation services and being very mindful of that, that feedback that we get. And then also, Talking Points is a new tool that we are using to communicate with families as well. We try to turn all of our materials around to parents. When we are releasing English materials, we're also releas- releasing them in the nine languages. So we are cognizant of that as well. And parents also, like you said, talk to us about not only before and aftercare, but summer opportunities. They need a full-day program with transportation. And so Dr. Eccleston and I are striving to be able to provide that, and he has already started on the planning for next summer to be able to deliver that to our parents.
Thank you.
Mr. Tran?
Ah, yes. Well, I, I, I'll put it very bluntly out there. All the questions are asked, all the comments are made. I just made, I just want to make one comment. Whatever the plan that, 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 that you are putting together to remediate the situation, I hope it, it will work because seeing all these minus signs along all this data for the last year, despite the fact that, you know, the, the MCAS was changed, despite the fact that, 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 that the instruction was online, the students were online, all that. Despite all that, the information that you presented to us bluntly speaking, is unacceptable. It's one of our goal. It's one of our goals. And the goals, I would say that the goal, that goal is not met. So whatever you are doing, I hope that it, it'll change. If it doesn't change, then some, some is wrong. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Tran, we are, we share your assessment of that. We are not satisfied, and we will continue to put in place the support systems for our students. It has been a very tough year on students, and this data shows that. And, you know, we're working hard with our educators and looking forward to seeing those numbers in green. But I do think, just to be realistic, this pandemic went on for nearly two years, and it will be more than two years. I think that it will take some time for some of our students to, to catch up now. It has been very traumatizing for some of our students and very challenging time as this has, as this pandemic has worn on.
Thank you. Ms. Filanco Garcia?
Yo, al igual que muchos de, de las personas que han hablado, me, me siento triste también por los resultados. Sé como decía la superintendente que la pandemia ha causado sus estragos, lo podemos ver también en los resultados.
It's very big, as I mentioned before, I feel sad about this information as, as the superintendent mentioned before, we can see it because there's the results that is reflected on the results. It is, it is sad.
Sin embargo, quiero puntualizar para no abundar más sobre el referente de que nosotros pudiéramos pensar en iniciar conversaciones con los principales de las escuelas. Sabemos que tenemos unas mesas de equidad que ahora están trabajando todas las escuelas para poder determinar en qué utilizar los fondos ESR.
But we do have to consider that there are some equity tables that they'll be able to determine what is the proper use of the ESR funds. It is just a matter of having conversations. Perhaps we can engage in a conversation with the principals of school. And it is not my intention to elaborate and to give more specifics on this, but that is an option.
Pudiéramos pensar en proveer tutorías, pagarle a los maestros para que los maestros pudieran dar tutorías a aquellos estudiantes que tienen, tuvieron esas bajas calificaciones.
Perhaps we can think of different options. Why not pay the teachers to offer some, to be tutors, tutors of those students that unfortunately did not perform well and had poor grades? That is an option.
Porque esto podría ayudar mucho a los estudiantes, porque, por ejemplo, los alumnos que pasaron ya que se fueron a otros niveles van a quedar con esa deficiencia. Si pensamos, hemos pensado, escuché que la superintendent dijo que pudiera ser el otro año que se implementaría, pero entonces, ¿qué va a pasar? Debemos pensar, creo que debemos iniciar conversaciones para ver cómo.
I do believe that we have to start conversations, but what is going to happen, there are, there's two groups of students. It was mentioned before, the superintendent, those that passed, that will go to different levels next year, and these students that did not pass. So it is just a matter of, we do have to engage, start conversations.
Sí, porque lo más importante es nuestros estudiantes. Queremos todo lo mejor para nuestras estudiantes, ¿verdad? Entonces pienso que debemos también iniciar, vuelvo y repito, conversaciones con nuestros principales, con nuestras escuelas. Vamos a ver cuál es el mejor método que podemos utilizar para que esos estudiantes no lleguen tan lejos con esas bajas calificaciones y que le arrastren al próximo nivel.
So we do have to think about this. It is a matter of engaging in conversations, conversations with the principals of the different schools. That is, we have to consider this because the students that unfortunately did not perform that well, they will be lagging, going into different levels. Students are our top priority, and we do have to consider this.
Thank you. I, I do want to just, again, I mean, these results are very alarming. However, if you look at the 10th grade ELA results compared to the three through eight ELA results had in person in the 10th grade, you had the full test. And in the lower grades, you did not have that. And so I just, you know, those show, showed two different pictures, right? And so just really trying to understand the, the testing environment for students when they were remote could have impacted some of the scores as well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Madam Chair, I, I just want to say I echo my colleague's comments that these results are sobering. Sadly, they're not surprising. And I say that for two reasons. One, you talk to anyone around the Commonwealth, you talk to anyone around the country, every district is dealing with results like this. And if you think about why, you think about what happened with our students suddenly switching to remote, trying to get internet access, our teachers trying to adjust on the fly about how they taught. There was so much happening that learning loss happened. And, you know, we have to be honest about it. I think former Secretary of Education Paul Revel had the best analogy in the middle of COVID, when he said, people talk about rising tide lifts all boats. But you think of COVID as the tide going out. And it exposed the inequities that we, those of us who work in education knew were there. I think it surprised a lot of parents and a lot of other folks who didn't pay as much attention to education when they saw the inequities that became exposed for all to see. Like low tide exposes the bottom of a harbor. And the challenges students faced were real. And we can focus on the test and the differences between the tests, you know, do they make sense and the testing inequities. But we know bottom line, our students and all students were struggling adapting to a new way of learning, and our teachers were struggling. And so i- it is what it is. The question is, what do we do about it? And how we take these federal funds and attack with a sense of urgency the learning loss, especially for our students who struggled the most. And it's great to hear of some strategic planning going on and academies coming up and that type of thing. But I echo the comments of my fellow members that the sense of urgency of attacking as soon as possible and drawing on best practices from around the country and around the district and around the Commonwealth. And if it's stipending teachers to tutor after class for the students that most need it, because the teachers know. No one knows better than the teachers and the paraprofessionals and the co-teachers that are in the classrooms. And if it's doing as the superintendent says, working with nonprofits, the WISE and others that have also developed programs and figuring out how we attack this together, we have to do it. We owe it to our students, and the sense of urgency has to be overriding. You know, we're about to talk about exam school. And as we talk about that, that policy impacts 1,000, at the most, 1,000 of our students. This is something we're talking about that impacts 50,000 of our students. This is where our attention needs to be. This is where our focus needs to be. This is where the district's attention and focus and sense of urgency needs to be. And Superintendent, any idea you put on the table about how we attack this as fast and furiously as possible has my support and encouragement.
Thank you. I want to go back to Mr. Cole, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, thank you. And then I think we're all, it's great to feel like we're all on the same page with urgency and, and a lot of passion. So I have two comments. One, one is directly to you, Dr. Eccleston. So you, you have a plan of attack, you have, you have strategies you can take on, and, and that, that, you know, seemed to be well-aligned. And you talked about teachers getting involved in the social-emotional, and I think, as you know, around the country, people are saying, you know, a lot of kids are not engaged in school, and we have to get better at that. And there's a lot of data that teachers are often unwittingly and sometimes willingly. Part of the reason is that makes it difficult for kids to connect. So as you think about the social, helping teachers understand the social-emotional challenges kids are facing, what are you, what are we doing? And I agree with big moral school councils, that's all great, you know, responses to the kids is, is very important. But do we have a plan on professional development for teachers to be better at empathy and caring and adjusting to the needs of students, not just individualized instruction, but really adjusting to the needs of students and preparing and the ability to evaluate their performance in this area? So the principal's going to have some way to say, you know, you're doing a great job, but you're not doing good enough. Here's a remediation plan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. I'll, I'll comment on a few things that are sort of in, in progress or being implemented, and certainly would be open to additional ideas. One, our team on the Social Emotional Learning Team has developed a number of transformative cell tools that are publicly accessible to all the educators across the system. And they have been leading professional learning for educators to help support the implementation of those tools at the school level. Two additional things that I think are very important. Likely as part of our ESR III application, we will be investing in a comprehensive SEL curriculum to support the implementation at school around SEL. And then three, I think there's some innovative, exciting practices that are emerging in this space as a result of our hub schools and really trying to unpack those and understand them better and help scale those practices at a much more accelerated rate than we have in the past. Seems like a very promising practice to support our implementation of SEL.
Right. And, and, and I, I, I hope that there'll be some time in principal festival development about helping them be able to evaluate teachers' ability to implement the, the skills and that that become part of the work we do. So, so thank you. It's very, very exciting.
I will follow up with Chief Harris on that point.
Great, great. Thank you very much. So my, my, my last question is actually be, we're going to come back to this question again, as we talk about the superintendent's goals. What is going to be our system for progress monitoring, monitoring, monitoring? Sorry, it's getting late. So we have all these strategies, we have these practices, we have these things that we're going to do. And I think Ms. LePere spoke to this earlier, is how are we going to monitor our progress in a rapid cycle of evaluation? What are our short-term goals? What's the street data we're going to use to say, we're doing these strategies in 60 days, how do we know how we're doing? And if we're not doing well, what are we going to, are we going to be able to correct our plan of action? And what are the, that's not the way school systems work. You know, we get our MCAS data, we got a plan, and we'll wait a year to see the rest of the data. What are we really going to do to say, this strat, these strategies are doing, getting what we want? These aren't. Who's going to be responsible to change? And in that monitoring process, will, will it be done school by school? And to what degree will we have access? And I'm ambivalent about asking this question because, you know, I don't want to play gotcha with individual schools, they're stressful. But when it comes to anticipating issues that are going to come up for schools, how are we going to get, how are we going to see when they're entering emergency? entering emergency before they get their crisis?
That's a really good question and I will have Drew answer part of it. I met with the school superintendents today. They're going to be our levers of change with school leaders. And so we added, I think it's two additional now, I'm like, it's getting late. Elementary school superintendents to our team. And also two additional high school superintendents to our team so that we could bring down the ratio of school superintendents to school leaders to provide better support to them. We also have our formative assessments. They're reviewing those. I think Monica, is it, the window ends this week? I think.
The fall administration window officially ends on Friday, though I think we might have a few schools that will end up testing next week, so.
Okay, so for the majority of our schools, we'll have the results on the formative assessments. Monica and her team will run those assessments down by school and then by school superintendent and by region. They'll get those results. They will sit with their school leaders and talk about their plans for supporting students. We have a system called panorama that we have used around student success plans that we started with the pandemic that school leaders will use to document the work that they're doing with their students for their whole student support team. And then we'll come back and then as we look at the formative assessment and what standards are being met and what standards are not being met. Hopefully Monica and her team will be able to tell us and lift those out. And then Drew and his team will take over and work at our all principal meetings to share with them what opportunities are available with professional development to have teachers focus and reteach on those standards where we're seeing some difficulty at the district level and at the grade level bands, so that we'll have that information. Drew, do you want to speak to it a little bit further?
Yeah, I mean, I think you articulated it quite well, Superintendent. I think the, the important piece of this is to deeply dive into the standards. We have to do more work to ensure that our principals are putting standards at the center of the work that they're doing with their teachers and our teachers all deeply understand the standards. I will say that I think we have excellent teachers and principals across this district. And I believe that with more deep intentional focus, we can easily surpass the averages across the system. And, and just surpassing them is not enough. I, I really think that we can accelerate student outcomes. I feel very strongly about that, given the sort of talent of the team. We have to make sure that we're analyzing data based on the standards. And we're taking good information about where our students are struggling, individual students, classrooms of students, schools of students, regions of, of, across the city and a school superintendent. I, I've previously been a school superintendent here in the city, right? I always wanted to know, what are the patterns and trends that are happening in seventh and eighth grade mathematics, for example? And what's going on in those classrooms? And I'm working with those principals to ensure that we're building out concrete specific plans for students based on the patterns and trends that we're seeing across the network. Sometimes, and this was true in, in the schools in Matapam when I was leading them, we saw an issue around sort of ramping up for, for Algebra I by eighth, by eighth and ninth grade. Right? And so we, we inserted additional resources that could be shared within the community and making sure that there was additional sort of tutoring that was happening. The final point I just wanted to make on this, just to respond to a few of the comments, which I fully agree with everything that's been shared. And also just want to add that yes, we totally agree that additional time with high quality educators is going to be critical. We will be investing and will continue to invest in tutoring options for students outside of schools. We made decisions to compensate our educators at rates significantly higher than we've ever done in the past. Because we know that that's what it's going to take at this moment in time to get people to step up. People are exhausted. I get it. But we have significant work to do for our students and the data shows that. And I'm personally committed to working with this academics team, the strong team that we have here with our principal core and our educators to make sure that that happens.
Great, thank you very much. And I really want, I'm very excited because I think it's been the time I've been involved with Boston. I, I think we've underutilized our assistant superintendents as the lever of change and the lever, level of responsibility. So I'm really excited to see that, that, that every, we, we start getting close to that and then we back away. So I want to really encourage I, that, that, that is a strategy that seems could be productive for us. Particularly at the, both getting people what they need and holding people accountable. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you. Um, most of my questions have been answered and particularly what you've just said at the very end, Dr. Eccleston, about drilling down deeper. And that's where a couple of my questions are of what, what's, so we've got this information now, what happens next? In terms of do we disaggregate this data at the school level, at the classroom level? How are we understanding within all of our broad categories, who is making it and who is not? Um, and what are we doing to help teachers to drill down into this? But more importantly, what are we saying to children and their families about how, how they did this past year? And what are we going to be doing with them specifically? To help them improve what they weren't able to do as we anticipate what next year's testing is going to encompass? Drew, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, sorry. I saw your account, your microphone was off, so I just wanted to give you a chance if you're.
I didn't, I don't think I put it back on mute. I'm sorry.
It's fine. It's late. I, I think, I don't know if I have a different answer than what I just shared, but I will, I will say that yes, we have, we have already disaggregated this data to look at patterns and trends across specific standards. We've had those conversations with school superintendents and school leaders. I, I, I have been in 30-ish schools since the start of school. I know the superintendent has probably been in more. And we are having direct conversations around what we're seeing in classrooms and helping principals think through next steps. Having conversations around, specific conversations around data that we're seeing. And helping principals and others think through their action steps. And including partnering with their instructional coaches at their specific schools to work directly with, with educators in the system. So like that, that is, that drilling down is the work. The drilling down and developing action plans for students, that's what moves the academic needle. And my previous experience as a former principal, as a former superintendent, as a former school superintendent here in the B P S. When you get to that level of detail and you know that level of detail and you're in classrooms and you're having hard questions and you're engaging in those conversations, that, that will move academic outcomes for students.
I would just like to add briefly, Madam Chair, that as we look at data, we want to make sure that we are not using it in a punitive way. But that we're providing not only accountability, but we're providing support. And I think that's what the S R dollars and the focus that Dr. Eccleston is talking about is, but we have to shift the culture around. You know, yes, we're alarmed with this data. But it is what it is. And so now we have to dig in and make it better. And really put in place the ability to look at it in a safe environment so that people don't shut down. So that we can get to the supportive measures we need to take to move the needle forward. So I just wanted to say, you know, one thing that I'll commit to the school committee. If, if you commit to stay with me on growth, as we strive for a meeting on grade level is that, you know, I can at the October 27th meeting as part of my superintendent report, bring back some of the preliminary information that we are seeing in our formatives. And that, and what Dr. Eccleston and I are going to be doing with our school teams and our overall educators to address any shortfalls in that formative data. Or celebrate some of the progress maybe that we're also seeing at different grade levels.
Great. I have other questions, but I know our time is moving fast. I just have one quickie. Can you explain what paper is? This process, I know you've talked about paper being a system for tutoring, et cetera. Is paper the name of the program?
Paper is an organization that is a tutoring company that provides 24/7 access to tutoring. So that's one way that we're providing tutoring. It was just to give some context super quickly. I know it's getting late. We were trying to solve a specific problem in the system, which is what happens if we have students who need to quarantine because of a COVID positive test? Or if they need to quarantine because there are close contact of someone who was and they weren't participating in test and stay. And we were looking for options of what might be useful for those students during that time. And in the research of, of kind of going to that process, we found this organization, Paper, and realize as we engage in conversations with them, that that could not only be, that could, could certainly be a useful tool to support students to complete work while at home on quarantine. But also could be a universal tier one support that could be available to all B P S students. So if you're a student who is studying for the S A Ts and you have a question about how best to study for the S A Ts or want to get a sort of some, some support on that, you could go to the tutor and ask those questions. If you want to have an essay looked at, the tutor could help provide some written feedback on your essay. If you help, need help with your, over your work while you're on quarantine, the student could, the, the tutor could also provide access to that. The, the tutors provide support to students in nine of the major languages in the B P S. And so we felt from an equity perspective, that it could be a really useful tool specifically at this moment in time.
And have we started using it?
Uh, we rolled it out last week. So we're really at the really beginning stages and communicated this to, to many of our stakeholders across the city. We have trainings coming up for principals, optional training sessions. So they can understand the power of the platform and how educators might be able to access the information that comes out of the tutoring session.
One thing that I'm really excited about with this platform is the opportunity for high school students to increase their knowledge around writing research and writing papers and persuasive essays. Because they can submit their papers and get feedback on their papers. And I think that would then help them. And the tutors don't give them the answers. They use a Socratic method of questioning students about how, and helping them to arrive at the answers themselves.
Great. Thank you. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question around paper. It sounds like it's, it's an opt-in process for students. Is that correct?
Uh, it's, could you explain what you mean by opt-in, just so I understand?
So meaning there's never any real, there's no requirement that any fam, student or family engage with the service, but that if they have a desire for a tutor, that they would opt into getting those services?
That, that's correct. Yes.
Correct.
Unless, unless a teacher sees the power in it. Like if I was a writing workshop teacher, I would have my students log in and do some peer review and use tutor every now and then. So teachers can also use this service with their students as an instructional tool.
Got it. And so are we, going back to, I think, Dr. Coleman's point around strategies that we employ and then seeing like the, the impact of those investments? Is this something that we'll be looking to see how many students are engaging with this resource and perhaps how many educators are leveraging the tool? Will we be tracking that information as a, like at the central office as a district?
Yeah, I'm meeting with them right now once a week and we'll be talking about all of these data. This will be very important for us to review. To think about the return on investment, to think if this is something that's, that's useful in the future. Felt like it met, met the moment. And we will need to see data to decide if it's useful for the future. Those questions are exactly at the core of what we'll be talking to them about.
And our parents, you know, getting back at the comments earlier about parents having access, you know, making sure parents understand and have access to these tools as well. Through parent university and our other training modules with parents.
Appreciate it.
Just add one last comment on this. I know we need to move on, but the, the platform also allows teachers to get a transcript of the tutoring session between the student and the, in the tutor. So the, i- if multiple students were going to the tutor to ask specific questions, that's important data for the teacher to consider. Around the way that he or she maybe was sort of delivering lessons as well as all of the written feedback that a student got on their work would also be available to the teacher so they could see a record of that information.
And is there a limitation on the upper end of how many students can engage with this or can all of our students engage with it at, at the same time? I know I'm going to maximums here, but I'm just wondering.
They have capacity to do that and we have bought, purchased a license for every student in the B P S to be able to use this as a tool, particularly at the youngest grades. We think that that they will, the students will need some parent support or some adult support to access this. And so we have other sort of avenues that we'll be approaching tutoring for that group of students. But this is available to everyone.
Drew, I do think for it's available in four languages, but then the other languages are available within a few hours or within. They have to go get the tutor assigned.
There's immediate access in four languages. English, Spanish, Mandarin and French. And a scheduled tutoring session within an hour for the other nine ling, major languages in the B P S.
Thank you. Appreciate the additional information.
Yeah. Thank you. This, that's all sounds very exciting and we look forward to hearing more updates around the implementation of the supports for students as we move into the school year. Thank you all very much. Our next report is the exam school admissions policy implementation update. You recall that last July, the committee approved a new exam schools admission policy to be phased in beginning with the entry in school year 22, 23. And at the time, members requested an inflammation, implementation update with additional data on this fall. And that's what we are going to hear this evening. So I'd like to invite the superintendent to provide some opening remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, my team will provide an update on the implementation of the exam school admissions policy approved by the school committee on July 14th. This presentation will include an overview of the new policy. It's going to provide clarity around the simulation data that informed our decision-making. And update the community and the school committee on our timeline for implementation. Our goal since the outset of this process dating back to the summer of 2020 was to promote equitable citywide access to our exam schools and to ensure that the educational experience of all our students is enriched by socioeconomic, geographic and racial diversity. I want to once again thank our members of our exam school admissions task force for their dedicated public service. Months of public discourse, hours of research and deep analysis of student data, which informed their recommendation, which led to the adoption of this policy. And as we strive to be a more equitable and excellent organization, this policy meets the charge of the school committee and our strategic plan. This is, is going to increase equitable opportunity while maintaining academic rigor. The goal is a simplified process that is easy to understand and ensures more students, especially those from disadvantaged backgrounds, have access to our three exam schools. I also want to reaffirm my and the committee's commitment to examining all of our policies and practices to ensure that all students across all our schools have access to a rigorous curriculum and an excellent education. And I'm just going to turn it over to Chief of Family Community Advancement, Monica Roberts, who did an amazing job of steering this committee. She and both Monica Hogan and Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Drew Eccleston, who will add some of his comments of work that they'll be doing that I mentioned earlier in my superintendent's report around the comprehensive plan for grades four through six. And some of the grading and other academic changes that are going to be needed to implement the policy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Roberts.
Thank you, Dr. Cassellius. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Glad to be here to give an update on the implementation of the exam school policy approved on July 14th by this body. I'm going to share some simulations. So I'm going to ask my colleague to advance to the next slide. Thank you. We're going to just start by just reminding folks about what the policy is that was passed. The policy establishes criteria for eligibility in terms of who can apply. Students will need to have a grade point average of a B or higher using. Students will need to have a grade point average of a B or higher using English language arts. Math, science and social studies grades to be eligible to apply. Students will also need to take an assessment. Applicants will be placed and ranked from highest to lowest score. In a socioeconomic tier, which I will share more about later in this presentation. And I do want to say that we are implementing this policy in two phases, whichever we share on the next slide, please. So I will first walk through the process for this school year. Again, the first requirement for consideration is that students must have a B grade point average or greater. But for the first two terms of this school year, we are not using data. Great some last school year, given that we were in a pandemic. And there were varying levels of access by students and families and experiences. For this school year's process, we are not giving an assessment. So applicants will receive a what we are calling a composite score or a total score based on their grade point average. The score range from one to one hundred. And students may receive additional points. Students living in housing owned by the Boston Housing Authority. In the care of the Department of Children and Families. Or experiencing homelessness will receive an additional fifteen points. That will be added to their that will help with their GPA. Create their composite score. Students attending a school where forty percent or more of the students enrolled come from economically disadvantaged families. Will receive ten additional points. Students receiving the fifteen points cannot also qualify for the ten points they would just received the fifteen points. It is not an additive points system. The total points will be what we call their composite score. After this school year, applicants will again still need to have that B or higher grade point average using the same subjects. However, it will be calculated using the last two terms of the student's fifth or seventh grade year, depending on which year they are going to be. What grade they're applying to get in and the first two terms of their sixth or eighth grade year. Students will also participate in an assessment and will have two opportunities to take the test in the spring and the fall. The better of those two scores will be taken to calculate their composite score. So the GPA and the assessment score will be combined as part of their composite score. The assessment will be weighted at thirty percent of the composite score. And the grade point average will be rated weighted at seventy percent. The total composite score from these two will range again from one to one hundred points. Students will continue to be eligible for additional points as I described earlier in terms of. Fifteen points for those living in Boston Housing Authority. Housing or in the camp, the Department of Children and Families or experiencing homeless for fifteen points. And those attending schools that have forty percent or more students enrolled. Coming from economically disadvantaged families receiving an additional ten points. Thank you. So the. Want to talk a little bit about the socioeconomic status tiers. These are based on socioeconomic scores for each census tract in the city. The socioeconomic score is a composite measure of five data points from the American Community Survey. And indicates economic need relative to other census tracks in the city. The five data points are percentage of students, a person sorry below poverty. Percentage of households not occupied by the owner. Percent sorry of families headed by a single parent. Percent of households where English is not the primary language spoken and educational attainment. The tiers are proportionally proportionally sized based on the number of school age children in grades five through eight. Living in each census track. Students are placed in tiers based on their home address. They are ranked within their tier based on a highest composite score to the lowest. If students have the exact same composite score, their rank will be determined by a random number. Each tier again will have the same number of seats available. And invitations will be awarded through what we'll call ten assignment rounds. And in each of those rounds, ten percent of the seats available to each tier will be distributed in that round. The tier with the lowest SES score will go first in each round. And a tier with the highest SES score will go last in each round. Students will be placed in their seat based on preference, so there isn't a certain number of allocations of seats per school. But to each tier, rather we focus on student preference for placement. I now want to share some simulations to move beyond the policy to visualizing what we think this will then mean. But I want to start with a reminder that we are limited in what we are able to simulate. These simulations are based on the seventh grade applicant pool for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. They give us an idea of what may happen and should not be interpreted as definitive results. The approved policy makes a number of changes that we are not able to simulate. Those being a change in the test from the ISE to the NWA's map growth test. Which we have not given to all students. The addition of science and social studies grades. Additional points awarded based on the school a student attends in fifth grade. The simulation includes sixth grade school. Additionally, students may not be geographically located across the city in the same way in future application years. Or may make the same school choices or may or may not make the same school choices as the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one applicants did. So with those considerations and those that you see on the slide, I'll move to the simulations. This slide shows high level data related to students attending schools with forty percent or more poverty. Who will receive additional points under the policy. Looking at the citywide sixth grade enrollment, approximately eighty three percent of students attend a school. With forty percent or more poverty. In the simulation data set, approximately seventy five percent of students attended one of these schools. And approximately sixty six percent of those students had a B. Average grade point average or higher. Under the simulation. Of the approved policy, approximately eighty percent of students receiving an invitation. Attended a school with forty percent or more poverty, which is proportional. To the percentage of students enrolled in citywide sixth grade. So as you are looking at this slide. Just to walk through the second column. List the citywide sixth grade enrollment by those attending schools with the forty percent or greater poverty. Concentration and those that are not. Unless the applicants that I just reviewed for the twenty 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 one school year. And then again, those with the higher GPA and lastly, the invitations based on that data. And what I'll note is that there be those ever invited are basically proportional. To the 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 rate of enrollment in the sixth grade citywide, so you'll see the eighty three percent of students again. Attending schools forty percent or greater poverty. Of that of the total invitation pool, eighty percent of them are comprised of students in this group. Next slide, please. This table provides an overview of the data we just reviewed, but by tier. You can see that the lower the S socioeconomic status tier. The higher the number of students attending a school enrolling forty percent or more students who are economically disadvantaged. And as we progress to the higher socioeconomic tiers. You'll see a larger number of students invited who are not attending a school enrolling forty percent or more students who are economically disadvantaged. Again, I think one of the key takeaways is that students attending schools that do not get the additional points. Will have access to seats and that this access is proportional to their overall representation in enrollment at that grade. I'm going to move to the next slide. As a reminder, the task force was charged with recommending a policy that achieved greater socioeconomic. Ratio and geographic diversity while maintaining rigor. I want to turn now the simulations of these three factors based on the data that we have just seen. And I will start with economic status and then we'll move to racial diversity and finally geographic. So I'm looking at this slide based on BPS K twelve enrollment, you'll see. The number of. Invitations by economically disadvantaged versus non economically disadvantaged. For the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one school year. The actual invitees, so students entering in this school year in terms of the percentages. Followed by the simulation of what this policy will look like moving forward. So for the twenty 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 one school year. We see thirty five percent of the those invited were classified as economically disadvantaged. Those entering this school year, so currently attending our exam schools for the first time this school year, forty three percent. Would have been considered economically disadvantaged. And in our simulation, fifty four point five percent would be. And you can see the the data for the non economically disadvantaged below that. Moving to race, you can see that there are some slight changes from. The twenty twenty one school year to the twenty one, twenty two school year, so those in this year's class entering. Are there was a slight change from the twenty to two twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year for Asian students of two percent. That we in our simulated policy, sorry, three percent in our simulated policy would go back up by two percent to twenty percent. Of those classified as black students for two years ago, you see thirteen percent enrollment. For this year, you see twenty three percent enrollment and our projection is. Our simulation is twenty one percent enrollment. I won't continue to go down, but you can see what it looks like for our Latinx, those who are identified as multi race or white. And you can see that there is diversity that is a little bit more proportional. To the the enrollment at the grade. Next slide, please. This slide is to show the geographic diversity of our under our simulated policy, so where students who are invited live. This is not a simulation of a any data by zip code, this data is again just showing the geographic distribution. Of our students who are invited using the the tier model. So you can see the the changes from two years ago, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one and twenty one to twenty two. That there there are some slight shifts in terms of. Areas of the city such as I think in last year that you'll see Chinatown has a increase from prior years. You will see, for example, that Roxbury has. Gone down a little bit with the oh two one one nine section of Roxbury well. Oh two, oh two, one, two, zero section of Roxbury has gone slightly up over that period. I just will pause for a minute so that you have an opportunity to look at this, I know you also have this. But for our viewing audience at home, don't want to go through the whole thing, but I think it's important for people to have a couple of seconds to take a look.
Monica, this presentation will also be available on our school committee website, correct?
Yes. So with that, I'm going to turn it to my colleague, Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Drew Eccleston, who you've already met. Where I spoke tonight, but we'll talk about our implementation timeline and some of the things that we are working on.
Thank you, Monica, I wanted to thank you for your extraordinary leadership of this work. And also want to acknowledge and thank Monica Hogan always for her. Exceptionally strong analytic skills and supporting not only this presentation, but the core work of this team. It was important to us to provide an update to the community on our timeline for implementation of this policy. That was adopted in July. And I wanted to begin by sharing some work that is already underway. As well as to forecast work ahead of us in the weeks and months to come. I wanted to thank members of the academic and technology team, most especially Chris Assistant Superintendent Christine Landry. And Ryan and Gutierrez and Mark Christine from OITT. They have worked to develop a training module or a learning module for educators across the BPS. I'll speak in more detail about that module in a coming slide. But the purpose of that module is to ensure that educators across the system. Deeply understand the policy that was adopted by the school committee. And its implication for the way that we approach grading across the system. In addition to these equitable sort of grading modules that will be launched. We'll also be working in the weeks to come to publish a superintendent circular. Which articulates the operational logistics for things like the GPA calculations, test administration and applications. So that we are as transparent with our community about the way that this policy will be implemented. We'll also begin in October of twenty twenty one that will continue through November. Work around verification of of residencies for non BPS students, which is part of the work. We'll also begin implementing investments intended to increase access to the exam schools. As well as continue to provide student support and develop and publish a plan for supporting incoming students. And the academic plan for grades four to six. In a slide in a moment, I'll communicate some of the interventions and supports. That our three exam school principals have put in place to already begin that. In November, in December of twenty twenty one. Will continue the process of residency verification, that process will continue through November eighteenth. Will continue implementing investments intending to increase access, which I'll talk about in a moment. And we'll be bringing forward an equitable grading policy. Being led by a school superintendent and the assistant superintendent for the academic and professional learning team. That will be brought forward to the school committee for consideration. Next slide, please. In January of twenty twenty two, we'll begin the process of grade collection for all non BPS exam school applicants. Beginning on January third. All families will rank schools through the online continuous choice form. Again, that will happen in January of twenty twenty two. In February of twenty twenty two, the deadline for grades to be submitted for all students happens on February eleventh. And over the months of March and April, GPA calculations and ranking within tiers will happen. Application status update for ineligible students. And invitations and status sent to families. In May and June, we will continue to implement the strategies for success program and I'll give you an update on the work that Chief. and I'll give you an update on the work that Chief Grandson and others, Dr. Grandson, have have led for the class entering September of 2022, as well as continue to publish an annual report in June, which we will do over multiple years to include disaggregated student outcomes and program evaluation of the policy. Next slide, please. This slide is intended to communicate a support that we are working in collaboration with the city to develop for our families. In order to help and support families to better understand what tier they live in, we're developing an interactive map for the BPS website. Families will be able to type in their address and the map will identify what tier they live in. We're thankful to the city of Boston's analytics team who is helping us on this initiative to help us build the map. And we anticipate it being available and on the website no later than November first. Next slide, please. I wanted to just expand on the work that Assistant Superintendent Christine Landry, along with her colleagues in the technology team have developed. They have developed a set of modules for our educators across the BPS. The module, the set of modules take about forty-five minutes to complete. They're both audio and video modules that students, that educators can watch either during their common planning time or some other time that they deem appropriate. And the the purpose is to provide additional information on equitable grading and the exam school admissions policy changes, particularly as it relates to the grading process. We'll expect that all educators have completed the modules sometime between October one and November one. We have communicated this to school leaders. We think it is appropriate for this to happen during common planning time. And that the, the over, the the topics that will be covered as part of this module include an overview of equitable grading practices, the exam school and circular updates, including things related to promotion and attendance, and also those things related to grading and grading practices, most particularly in science and social studies. And the accountability on this is that the module is tied to our refresh for for new devices for our educators and will allow us to have assurances that every educator has completed the module. Next slide. I just wanted to thank Dr. Grandson and his team for their work on implementation of Strategies for Success. You'll see that in June of 2021, we will run a four-week virtual program. This will be focused on writing ELA and math. And six, six hundred and fifteen students participated in this program. In August of 2021, it was a two to three weeks of programming at each exam school. The purpose was to help students develop a sense of belonging and to learn their school community and introduce them to the academic, social and civic expectations of each of the three schools. You can see the the level of participation by each school here on the slide. Next slide, please. Launched in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two and to be expanded for this upcoming academic school year and beyond, we have implemented at many of our schools, at the three exam schools, things like advisory programs for all incoming students. We've increased the number of school counselors and social workers at the three exam schools. We've increased access to special education supports in the classroom, increased the number of special education teachers and paraprofessionals, increased after-school tutoring programs and done events such as Thompson Island team building. Many of our exam schools have also supported extracurricular activities to ensure, extracurricular affairs rather, sorry, to ensure that our students are aware of the many opportunities that are available across our schools. So we'll at this point take questions, and I'm sure the superintendent will want to say a few words.
Well, I just wanted really share similar words that you did about Ms. Hogan and the team that has gotten together around this, Ms. Roberts. Thank you so much for your leadership. It really has been exceptional. And then, of course, the committee that did so much work on this policy led by Mr. Kontipasis, who is the former head of school, and Ms. Tanisha Sullivan, who is the president of the Boston NAACP, and their exceptional leadership, leading an incredible dedicated group of public citizens, parents and educators and students and others who are very interested and spend hours and hours combing through data, combing through the research, looking at other cities who also have exam school policies and using the best practices across the nation to put together this policy. I hope that this additional data and simulation, simulated data provides a clearer picture to school committee members and the public around our plans for implementation. And I open it up to the floor for any of your questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Dr. Eccleston, too, also for your presentation. We'll start with Ms. Marissa.
Thank you for your presentation. So my first question is, how would this impact students that are in the medical program or go to a charter school?
So students who live in Boston are able to apply and be able to go to the exam schools. If their school and medco or a charter school is below forty percent or below forty percent poverty level, they would not get the additional points. If it was above the forty percent poverty level, they would receive the points.
Thank you.
Mr. DeRusia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to say thank you to Ms. Roberts, Ms. Hogan and the team for putting this presentation together. I'll preface that, you know, my, my, my comments here are constructive. And I hope that they're, they're, they're taken in that way. And first of all, I just, I want to reflect on, on the process, the policymaking process as a school committee member, which I think in, in this case, at least for me, from my perspective, has been very flawed. And I think we need to work on making sure that we don't, we don't do something like this again in the future. And to be more specific, I, the, and I received a presentation, for example, this morning. I, I got to review it at some point in my, my lunch hour, I was able to take some time off. I did not have the usual time to socialize it with other advisors or experts to take a deep dive. I did have a briefing, which I appreciated on, on parts of this last week. But as a policymaker, you know, I'm basically wrestling with this for the first time as many folks, basically as, as the public is. And I'm being asked to determine whether this policy that we passed in another, I believe rushed scenario in July, if it is fair for, and in particular, what I've focused on is this coming, the, the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. What I hope and what I expect going forward, and I know we're going to have a retreat next week, and this will definitely be an issue in terms of process that I want to focus on is that, that we as policymakers, and we are the policymakers, right? This is, this is the Boston School Committee's policy. This is our role to adopt this, not the task force, not, of course, and our staff is making the recommendations. We, we recharge the task force and then we're taking their recommendations. And, you know, just reviewing this presentation, there are pieces that are responsive to the questions that I submitted last week, and I appreciate that. But there are many pieces here that are not responsive to it. And I don't feel that I have enough information to, to answer fully the questions that have been posed to me. Families who are concerned about, and again, focusing on this particular year, why are we using the ten points if we have no exam? That's, that's not clear to me. I do want to talk to more task force members as well and just recalling that process. I see the breakdown here of, of schools getting, you know, over forty percent getting to ten points and then under forty percent not getting to ten points. I am heartened to see that, that the, the percentage of invitations, there, there is a percentage of invitations. I, I didn't, I didn't know that there would be a percentage of invitations. But I'd also like to understand, you know, we're attaching these ten points, kind of just, we're attaching it to the building, right, to the school itself. It's not, it's not to the student. I'd like to understand, and I asked for this in my written report, in my written questions as well. Can we see a breakdown by schools? I think that's going to be important. What I, what I don't want is for us to come, and I appreciate, by the way, that the timeline, I think that was very helpful for us to see, you know, all the different steps. And I'm, I'm a little, I'm less concerned this afternoon than I was earlier that, that we do have time to have this process of submitting additional questions, getting the answers back so that if, if we as members feel that this is going to be unfair, in particular to, you know, to the, to the, to BPS schools who have reached out to us on concern, that we, we can make changes to this policy. This is not immutable. We, we as a body adopted the policy. I'll be honest with you, this, this interim year, and this is a failure of mine, I'm just speaking for myself, really was, was an afterthought. I was very much focused on the dynamics that shaped the, the, the long-term policy. And so when I started getting the questions and critiques from families for this coming year, I have sixth graders right now today. I did not have good answers to their questions, and I, and I still don't. I still don't have good answers to their questions. And as you know, we're getting these questions in writing. We got them, I think we got some tonight as well in the oral public comment as well as written. And, and I don't have good questions. So I hope that, I have some specific questions, which I'll, I'm going to just make my general comments now, and then I can, I'll have more specific questions. But not a way that I want to make a policy, especially a policy that is, that, you know, that is so important. And I feel that the, the diligence, the deliberation that we do should be proportional. There should be some standard, right, that we all adopt, and we can talk about that next week. But it, you know, I think it should be higher in these scenarios of great complexity. I'm not an expert in, you know, in statistics. I do have to consult as, and I know all members, we consult with experts and so forth. I do have to do that. I have to consult with members of the task force, kind of remembering back. And I didn't attend all the meetings, so understanding the dynamics. And I couldn't do that today, right? I, I couldn't do that with this presentation. So I'm not, I am not well-prepared to, to engage it. So I, I understand now that this will not be, pieces of this will be further implemented before we get, you know, before we get the answers that we need to determine if we do have to make changes or not. And I'm concerned that, you know, come, is it January or December? I don't want to come to that point like, well, grades are collected, you know, you, and, and we didn't have the answers that we needed. Because at that point, it's a moot point, right? Because then, then the policy is implemented at that point. I don't want us to be there. So I'm, I'm going to pause there. Those are my, my general comments. Again, I, I want this to be constructive. Every member might not have the same, you know, feelings about the policy process as I do. They are, they are my feelings, but I do want to put that on the record, and I'll have more specific questions in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeRusia. We'll use that as constructive feedback. Appreciate that as always. There are limitations to the data simulations, and some of the questions that you answered are very difficult to do because of the need to have real data for, especially a school-by-school analysis, for instance, that will vary based on the grades and the test that students have, and particularly this year, the grades and the good work that Drew Eccleston and the previous grading committee put together for the changes and how the grading will work because there'll be greater adherence to grades. So we think that there's, it's going to be, it will look different than the simulated data from the 2021 school year invitee group. So that is presenting our data team some challenges because of the limitations of the data. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then getting the, the PowerPoint presentation late. I know that we reviewed some of the data with some individual members earlier to make sure that we were answering and being responsive to the school committee's questions. So I appreciate the time to do that. So as we were deliberating with school committee members individually, giving them any answers to their questions, obviously, each time it takes time to do the simulations and to put together the presentations and then to get them translated. So I appreciate that feedback, and we'll continue to try to make sure that we get them to you in a timely way.
I appreciate that. I'll, I'll come, I know I have to take out my time. I'll come back as I do have just response questions on the, on, on the grades issue and that, you know, there's no test and so forth. So I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Others with questions? I don't see any hands raised. Oops, right, Dr. Coleman.
Sorry, you know, I, I appreciate that is, it's incredibly complex and difficult. And I'm not sure this is going to be an iterative process to get this right. But the one, the one thing that has come up consistently in public comment several times was a perception in the community that they went to do the independent analysis, that there were schools in which there was no chance to get into the district. And I was surprised as I read the report that there wasn't a rejoinder to that repeated and significant complaint. I mean, whether it was true or not true, that, that issue was not addressed. And that seems to me, I'm curious as to whether one took that criticism, complaint, speculation and did our own analysis and found that there, that every school in the district, there's a probability, it'll vary, that a kid could get, would get an exam school, that there are no schools with zero admissions would occur. I mean, I saw the geographic distribution. That's different than a school-by-school.
Right. I think that when we showed the data earlier, Monica is certainly the expert or so than me and in the data and the deep dive into it. But I think what we were able to show was that proportionally for students who are in a lower poverty school that they would not receive, receive additional points. However, you can see that they are receiving proportionally to their population of school-age students in each tier that there, they are, they do have a chance at getting it. So what we determine is that it's your grades, and eventually when the full policy is implemented, in addition to your test score, that is really going to be the determining factor in whether you do or do not get a seat at an exam school. Monica, do you need?
Having been on the committee for
either one.
Have been on the committee for a period of time. I'm very comfortable with the fact that we oriented our, one of our primary goals is to increase equitable access to opportunity across the city. And then, and I'm supportive of the current policy change because I think it adheres to those, that those goals, which are very difficult. It changes probability, it changes access, but it improves it for a broader range of people. So I'm at, at core comfortable with the proposal for those reasons. But the explicit hypothesis or claim that other data analysis suggests that there are schools, because of the way we've made these changes to be more equitable, in which no one has a chance to get in. I would, I would have hoped we had done that analysis and we could say, no, there is no school in BPS in which you were a member, given our current system, in which no student in that school has a probability of getting into the exam schools. That was, that was the claim, and I think we should respond to that explicitly, not.
Yeah, Dr. Coleman, I'll, I'll jump in here. I think an important thing to remember with both this policy and the prior policy is that no school has ever been guaranteed or denied any invitations to an exam school. One of the things that the task force did consider was a model similar to what happens in Texas for college admissions, where you consider the top percentage of schools. Where you consider the top percentage of schools. That would be guaranteed seats at a particular school. That is something that the task force. Ultimately did not want to pursue further. I'd have to go back to some of the minutes to try and recollect some of the the conversation that they had. But there was a lot of thinking around small schools in Boston. If there's only, you know, a single strand school. Where there's only twenty or twenty five students in a particular grade level. That could feel really limiting. And so part of the move from. This, I think, was also some of the feedback we heard around the zip codes in the interim policy. And so part of the move from zip codes to tiers was to not. Remove a perception that we were penalizing any sort of small areas, right? Because some of our zip codes were smaller and had smaller. Numbers of school age children and that felt like in those zip codes that students had limited access. So I think. What what we see in this data that was shared tonight was that there are students. In the simulation, attending a school that doesn't get points that do get an invitation. And we saw that those percentages are roughly proportional to the percentage of students enrolled citywide in sixth grade. I'm I'm not going to sit here and guarantee you one way or the other. That any single student will or will not get in under this policy. Because of everything we've outlined around limitations, right? The grades have not been recorded yet. We had, we don't have science and social studies grades to incorporate in a simulation. Students might not live in the same places. They might not attend the same schools. We just saw in the MCAS data tonight. Vast, vast impacts on student learning due to COVID. So I I think. My interpretation of the simulations and of the data is that there there is a chance for students at any school. To get in, but we cannot guarantee any single school. You will get ten seats or you will get five.
Monica, but that wasn't the complaint. The complaint that I heard that there's a probability, a high probability. That no one from the school would get in. I don't know whether that's true. I don't know whether that's true or not. I'm just saying, I would like to know whether that's true or not. But because that was the complaint, one of the complaints about this change system, which by and large I'm very supportive of, very supportive of. But I would want and I think I think the people, as we talked about listening to public comment and demonstrate that we listen. That is a criticism that I think we should be able to answer. But the answer is, yeah, that's true. There's there's. Given the way this works, there's a probability, there could be a probability that no one from a school could get in. Then we we need to deal with that. I'm not saying that would change my support of the policy, but it's information that I would be useful, but my time's up. Thank you.
Go back to Mr. DeRusio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just on on that exchange, so. I I am having a little trouble following the response, but but if the response is that. We cannot adequately model the impact of of our vote to attach ten points. To these schools, to to individual schools, right, not individuals with individual schools. And particularly in a year where there is no test, right, we're not giving a test for the twenty two, twenty three year. Then then if we can model it, I believe we should err on the side of rescinding. The the ten points. If we can't understand it, we can't model it. Then if it has a potential to have these impacts of significantly unfair impact, right? Where just by virtue of what, and we've I've heard directly from BPS schools. I think Ms. Mercer is the issue of charter and Metco, Metco schools. Students that if if it's we just can't model it, but we have this kind of thing that's just floating out there that wasn't part of. The original task force recommendation, really was an afterthought. Then and even if even if it was part of it or whatever, I think it's clear that that's potentially very unfair. Then we should not have the result. We do have the tier system. We do have, you know, using the grades, expanding the grades to include the other academic subjects. I think that, you know, I'm even more concerned after that response. I thought the 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 issue was. To be honest, and I apologize, phrase it this way, that just because of time constraints and so forth, not being responsive. Being able to show us, you know, round after round or whatever simulations that we want. But it's it really sounds like you you guys aren't able to do that. And then that makes me, that really convinces me that we should not include that piece in a year that we are not giving an exam. If I recall, really distinctly, the the points were used to kind of deal with the variation. In in the exam, which we're going to give, you know, in the in the future year, you know, no, no exam this year. We can't respond. In particular, to the BPS families that have reached out to us a number at a number of schools. And then just, you know, a question on on the on the invitations. In in that pool, in that twenty percent pool, does that also include individual students who are getting the fif- fifteen points? Do we know that? For for. You know, DCF homeless status, do we do we know on that? If that includes those students as well?
Monica, can you speak to the pool of the simulated pool and who is and is not included in that simulated?
I don't have that breakdown in front of me, but that's something we can follow up on on. The way the table was designed, the fifteen point students could be. They only received fifteen points in the simulation, but it's not broken out separately in that line. So they could be in in either one of the groups.
Okay.
In the table.
So what I'd appreciate seeing, and I'll submit a new written list and just update the one from before. I would like to see a simulation with ten points and without ten points, obviously working within a hundred percent SCS tiers. And and especially for this coming year with no, you know, with no exam and let's let's see what happens there. I am deeply concerned that we can't, we can't model out the most critical question that we have, which is. You know, if you, if you're essentially, you know, many kids are right there, they don't choose their school, right? And and BPS, they're they're lotteryed, they're lotteryed in. If you just happen to go to a school. That doesn't get the ten points, do you really have zero chance of getting into any of these programs? I'm not saying that, you know, whoever has first choice, second choice, you know. Thousands' choice, but but a probability of a choice, I think, is critical. I definitely didn't intend to vote for that for this, you know, for this this student, this upcoming student year. So I would like to see that. I'd also like to see. I think in our our one, our one on one session. We talked about showing test and no test, right, to show the impacts of that. I I don't know why we weren't able to show. It didn't seem like there was. That much of a difference between the two groups, but I would like to see, given that we are not showing a test, you know, for this. We are not, we are not administering a test for this year that we get to see that. So, you know, my my other questions are are very particular on on the data set, but I think that, you know, that exchange. You know, again, just tells me if if we can't model it and there's a real fundamental question about fairness here. Then we should err on the side of removing that piece. It doesn't doesn't do damage to the broader architecture. The equity piece that we've, I think, you know, we're all in, at least those of us who voted on it in July are in agreement with. But it does remove a potentially unfair piece that we don't want to be sitting in this room in in March or April saying, you know. You know, X number of kids applied from the Elliott or from Melenden or one of our schools and zero got in. That I think that would be problematic. And at that point, what do we do, right? Do we? Encourage them to apply in ninth grade? How do you how do you remedy? How do you remedy at that point? We can, we can reduce the risk today, right? But at that point, you know, the die is cast and and then what do you do at that point? What do you tell to families, right, at that point? So. So I'll I'll pause there. I'm sorry, I'm taking up all my time.
So we appreciate this feedback. I think that it's really important to continue to scrutinize this policy. Over its implementation over the next year. And as we look at the data and continue to cut the data, the committee spent a lot of time looking at the data in multiple different ways. And I appreciate the hard work that the commission put into or the working group put into, looking at all of the data. We will continue to provide as much data to the community and to the school committee members. So that you feel comfortable with the policy. So I appreciate this constant push. For us to continue to provide data will do as as best that we can to to provide and illuminate transparency on this policy. So that people can feel comfortable with it as we move forward and move through its implementation in its first year. You know, we put this policy together because we knew. That there were some deep inequities in the way that our students were being assigned. And proportionally, not everybody had the same fair shot at the exam schools geographically, racially, or by income. And so we went through a really lengthy public process for that. Brought it to the school committee to deliberate on it. Certainly, we will continue to examine it. I think that is a healthy piece to making sure that there is a solid trust in our community around this policy and transparency. So thank you for that, Mr. DeRusio. We'll get, we'll get you the data if you give us your further questions. We'll run it as best we can and and if we can't because there's a limitation, we will make sure that we tell you and the public on why we can't do that.
I appreciate that, Superintendent. Just to note that. By getting it right, it increases the legitimacy of the policy.
Absolutely.
These failures of not having sufficient data simulations to understand. Maybe being oversight on the policymaking side for this coming year, given that there's no test. That undermines legitimacy. It undermines the broader project. It undermines the work of the task force, undermines, you know, what we were trying to accomplish. So being thorough, doing our proper diligence, being able to address the concerns of families, you know, directly explicitly. The best that we can, that increases legitimacy, that reduces the risk that, you know, someone in my seat, you know. Twelve months from now is going to say, hey, let's let's move on, let's try something else, even after all this work. But if we get it right, then, you know, there's a legitimacy and things have staying power and and people can see the benefit. Not everyone's going to get the same opportunities, right, as before. But but but, you know, there's the, I think there's potential for broad based legitimacy of what we've done here. We need to get it right. So.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this has been a interesting conversation. I think important issues are being raised. I do want to thank the superintendent and particularly the team. Ms. Roberts, Ms. Hogan, Dr. Eccleston. I look at this presentation in three different buckets. So I see a conversation about or a presentation about implementation and update on implementation. And I think that was excellent. And I appreciate, as Mr. DiRugio said, the dates that were given. And that we could see the work that is being done to implement the policy that we collectively approved in July. I think a second bucket is around an explanation. Because there is confusion around this policy and. I appreciate Ms. Roberts, you right at the beginning, bringing us back to what was approved and trying to simplify it as much as possible. Those first couple of charts were excellent. And then there's a presentation around simulation, in particular, one piece of the policy that we approved, which is. In particular, the ten points. I align with other members have expressed concern back in July and several times since about, is there the potential? For unintended consequences here? Others have expressed it as I've taken it a bit further than me in saying. You know, is there a chance that in some schools, no one is going to be admitted? And Ms. Hogan, I do appreciate how you said. There's never been a guarantee to any school that students are going to get in or that they're not going to get in. It because it always depends upon the individual students. I'm also deeply sensitive to. First of all, thank you. You did the simulation. A lot of me wishes we had this in July and August or, you know, even the beginning of September because. In the absence of information. Alternative viewpoints can emerge and gain traction. And it does pain me when I hear a parent say. You know, if my child goes to this school, they stand no chance of getting in. And so why should I go there? And that is really the unintended consequences I had been talking about of. We don't want people to get that perception and start to transfer away from those schools. And is that, in fact, a possibility? I've done a lot of work with data in my day job. Quantitative and qualitative and have worked closely with research firms over the year, and I am very aware of the limitations of simulations. And are sensitive to that and particularly have dealt with a lot of research directors in my career. And I know how you get very hesitant. You feel you're on a tight, tight wire rope. And you get very nervous about making promises that the data isn't going to support. I I get it. You, the phrase statistically relevant rings in the back of your head. In the middle of the night and you get nervous about giving assurances. That the data may not support. And so I'm I'm sensitive to that. You are trying to make us aware. Of what the limitations are. So I stop and look at the simulations that you ran. And a couple of questions come up to me. One, is this the methodology you followed? In giving it to the task force for them to allow for for them to do the deep dives. And my understanding is, it is. You you simulated it on, it was two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty data on the ISE, which we're not going to have. On the grades of the students at that time. But I appreciate that it was a similar method that you followed and it's what the task force followed. So you didn't go a different way with these simulations. I was very, very struck when I saw. That chart that you showed. That said, students that attend the schools that will not receive points, forty percent or less than forty percent of poverty. Are seventeen, I think it was seventeen percent, Ms. Hogan, right? Are seventeen percent of that school age population in Boston. So, you know, sixth grade, school age population in Boston, so not just BPS. But there's seventeen percent and yet they're getting twenty percent of the invites, which to me is. Again, not, I don't know, the statistical relevance of that, but it's certainly done close in my mind. So I was looking to see if those students were going to be. Disproportionately impacted by this policy. Like it would have been eye opening to me if they were seventeen percent of the population, they were getting ten percent of the invites. Right? But I don't see that happening. I see it roughly equal. And to me. That indicates a level playing field. And that's what I'm focused on. Are we providing a level playing field for all of our students? Now, I recognize this is on simulated data. I recognize that. Other folks will run simulations of their own that may show something different. And people are going to look very closely at this simulated data, what the assumptions were. It would would be interesting to know what the numbers were for. If you ran it just on grades alone, because that is going to be the policy for this year, that it's grades alone. Does that create a a different impact? For versus the, you know, seventeen percent of the population and getting twenty percent of the invites? So I I think there is going to be a period where people are going to look very closely at these simulations and what the assumptions were and they're going to. Prove, push and prod and and maybe have some other potential simulations of their own. And that is healthy because that is how we get to a process of people. Buying into the plan that we approved. I am very sensitive to trying to. Adjust and and change during this year based upon various models of simulations and what ifs. Without us getting to the end of this year. You have in the implementation plan, a June review where we have actual data of what happened this past year. What happened this past year. And yet I am also sensitive to what Mr. Diarrugio said, which is if you're a parent of a sixth grader this year. You don't want to hear, well, we'll wait and look at it in June, right? So we have to be really comfortable. With this simulation model. And that it is providing a level playing field. And that it is not. Giving a um. Taken away opportunity for any group of students. So I've spoken long enough, but I I I just want to say, you know, to wrap up. Thank you for the implementation work, this was very helpful, and I think a lot of people will appreciate seeing that. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you for the simulations, I know it comes with a lot of caveats, I wish it had come earlier. I think we're going to go through a period now of pushing and prodding and understanding it a little bit more. But it is necessary for our parents across this city. To be able to buy into what we are doing is fair. And. Levels gives a level opportunity, a level playing field for all of our students. Um, and so. I I I think this is an important presentation tonight, and it was. Comforting to me as a person who was coming into it. Concerned about a disproportionate impact to. A subset of students. I draw a much more comfort seeing that. Those students, the amount of invites they're simulated to get is roughly equal to the populations and so. Um, that was really helpful for me. In getting more comfort with. The policy that we approved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Do others have comments that they'd like to make? Dr. Coleman, do you have another question? No. Thank you, um, I agree with everything that um, Mr. O'Neill has said. Um, and I thank you all for the very, very hard work that you've gone into this and know that we have. Still many more um moments to continue to learn from. What you are, what the simulations are telling you and getting clarity around any number of issues around the implementation. One of the things I know we've talked a little bit about, but but um. Questions for me have. I just have a couple of questions with regard to the issues around the tiers. So people, we will be able to basically once the rubric. Or the simulation is available, anyone. So any sixth grade family can plug their themselves in and understand what tier that they're in. So what I understand is that we don't have the number of students. That will be in a tier. Will be by the number of people who live within that tier's definition. But each tier will have. An equal number of seats. So that there could be, so what what happens if there is a tier with a hundred and twenty-five? Seats, but. An invitation that's only eighty students. I mean, I don't know whether that would ever come out versus the tier that has a hundred and twenty-five seats that may have. Two hundred and fifty students, what happens in the tier where there may be fewer? Um, students than invitations? Will those, will those ex- would those extra? Seats be redistributed to other tiers or is that even a possibility?
So I think that's um, the the tiers were sized. Based on the number of. Children in grades five to eight. Living in the city um to in order to make them proportionally sized. Um. We know, however, though, from historical data that not all students apply to exam schools. I mean, so applicants and moreover qualified applicants, because there is a minimum GPA in the policy now. May not be evenly distributed then across the city um in the tiers, so. In the simulations, we did not run into um the problem of running out of qualified applicants in any of the tiers. But um, if if we, if that were to happen in actual implementation. Um, we would, of course, need to talk through that, but my my first thought would be redistributing those seats amongst the tiers that do still have applicants. Okay, so that would be something we would need to decide um. If that presents itself in implementation of the policy.
Great. Thank you. And again, thank you for the update, um, it's been well done and I and I agree that a number of the questions that we had coming into it. What you have shown us to tonight has given us a different level of competence. Around be continuing to move forward with the implementation of this policy in the next school year. So again, thank you all for all of your hard work. Um, like to now move on to our last. Um, final report for the evening, which is the superintendent's performance goals for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two. Among the chief responsibilities of the school committee is providing the superintendent. With an annual performance evaluation. Part of that evaluation process is the setting of annual performance goals. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to the superintendent and then to Dr. Harden Coleman, oops, excuse me, Dr. Coleman.
Do you want me to go, Dr. Coleman?
That was, that was a mistake by raising my hand. But I thought I was going to go, right, then we.
I I think he's just asking me to make some comments before.
And then, and then you will take it, okay.
Great, great, good, right, good.
Yeah, I just wanted for, I I'm going to be very brief, I just want to thank Dr. Coleman for his stewardship of this process in the full committee on their evaluation. Um, I believe that there is, as this uh data shows, a lot of work to do. Um, within the district. Um, as you all know, we have been in a pandemic and when I stepped foot into Boston Public Schools, there was a. Threat of receivership and audit done on the school district. So we know that there are some longstanding uh issues that we need to um dig out of. And of to become a high performing school district, um, that has been quite challenging uh in a pandemic, however. Uh, we are very committed uh to excellence and equity. And we are still moving the needle and have accomplished much even though. We uh have been. Needing to uh first prioritize the health and safety of our community, so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Coleman. Uh, we have student learning goals as well as some other goals that are professional goals for myself. Uh, that he will uh walk you through. Based on the evaluation. Think you're on mute, Dr. Coleman.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Cassellius. Um, so this is a complex, so I apologize, I I wrote this out, so I didn't want to forget anything, so I'll read it to you and I'll try to read slowly. For the interpreter, so. Greetings, uh, tonight we begin the process of determining the goals and metrics by which we will evaluate the superintendent's performance in the late spring of twenty-twenty-two. As an outcome of our consultation with the Council of Great City Schools. We commit to becoming an outcome focused school district. As part of that process, we committed to focusing on a limited number of goals. That are central to to implement our strategic vision. Are measurable and are time bound. To that end, we've asked the superintendent to share with us the four major goals that she has for this academic year. A document that was sent to you and the community to review, to be reviewed this evening. Chair Robinson has asked me to go over these goals with you this evening by answering the file. By answering five questions. The first question is, how were these goals selected? So part of the answer is this is an iterative process. The first step is that the school committee created a strategic plan to identify at a high level. The priorities we need to address to create and sustain a gap closing district. As a committee and district, we have elevated meeting the needs of our student learning goals as priorities. With a particular focus on ELL and students, English language learners and students with disabilities. Followed by literacy and social emotional well-being as the foundation to becoming a success. Successful learner. We have also asked the superintendent to pay particular attention to the challenges of developing cohesive. And effective working relationship between the central office and the school, a conversation we had tonight. In terms of relationship of implementing um the uh uh current academic approach. Which using the assistant superintendents as part of that building of relationship. The next step in the process in the development of the goals. Is we've asked the superintendent to consult closely. With groups like the ELL Task Force, SPED PAC, the O A D Task Force. And the Division of Teaching Learners and other community members as she considers developing the goals. And the third step is that based on these consultations, the superintendent, working with her team. Has developed or to develop or is developing measurable outcomes and strategies to achieve these outcomes. So that's questioned to the first question of of how did they, how would they develop? The second question the chairs asked me to address is why these goals? So in short, they reflect our highest priorities. Progress in these areas are fundamental to becoming a gap closing district. Of course, there are other challenges facing the districts that cannot and will not be ignored. But based on our consultation with the Council of Great City Schools, we realize. That the the importance of being successful with a small number of significant goals. Will serve us better than being distracted by multiple objectives. The superintendent is proposing that the progress in these goals will have a system changing impact on the whole district. The third question is, how will these goals be measured? As we've already discussed this evening, this is an ongoing challenge to using district wide data to measure progress. As a di- as a district. And that the data from one year from the last year comes in October. After we've already made programmatic commitments, a number of our colleagues tonight have pointed out the the concern. That as we see new new issues we have to take on, that we've already committed our resources and. And it's a, it it feels like um a disjointed way to do a planning. And it's also is going to take the superintendent's team a few weeks to analyze last year's data to determine appropriate goals for this year. This structural challenge is not made any easier. To have useful data when so much of our testing was disrupted by the pandemic, which is also discussed earlier tonight. At this point, however, we can see what data will be used to measure progress. But will not have the actual goals set until I uh until the uh academic year twenty-twenty-one's data has been analyzed. The fourth question, and we had this conversation earlier tonight as well, is how will progress for these goals be monitored? This is where the work we did with the Council of Grace City Schools, we hope will really pay off. We were asking the superintendent and her team not only to establish annual goals. But to propose a process of progress monitor monitoring, mon- monitoring. Um, that will be part of every school committee throughout the year, that we want to organize our school committees about reports on our progress uh moving forward. The superintendent and her team have already constructed a data dashboard. That once the annual academic uh year uh twenty-twenty-one data has been analyzed, will be used in this mon- monitoring. In addition. It's the chair's recommendation that we use our time in our retreat next week. To establish a schedule for this coming year to have these reports. For the example, there's a history of our being informed late in the year that a school is failing to pro- progress. Which creates a crisis response. We are eager to develop a system that allows us to see a school in distress before it reaches the crisis stage. And five. How will these plans for course corrections be made and communicated? So once we see the data showing that there are problems that haven't been solved. And as that they call for a course correction, how will that decision be made and communicated? As a district that is now committed to being data driven and focused on continual improvement. We also need to become more effective at communicating how these changes will be made in response to new data. We are asking as part of the upcoming treat that the superintendent and her team initiate a conversation with us. As to how they will manage course corrections to strategies that are proving to be ineffective. So the superintendent, as am I, is open to answering any clarifying questions you have about these goals. We will then have a discussion about any proposed changes. It's important to note at this time that we are limited to, committed to having a limited set of goals. So if you feel str- very strongly that we need to add another goal. We will need to let you, you you will need to let us know which one of the current goals will take off list. Or how your goal will be integrated into one of the existing goals. So with that, I will assume that you've had an opportunity to review the goals, but maybe um, Ms. Sullivan, if we quickly kind of go quick quickly through. So the first goal is related to English language learners. And the goal that you can see is to significantly improve the outcomes. This is a situation where we don't have the data yet. To directly be able to say what the numerical goals are, but you can see what the source of the data will will be, both in terms of making progress. And also particularly me- measuring an issue that we've all had lots of concern about. Which is the interaction of being English language learner and having and having disabilities. Um, and then you can see the sup- the proposed strategies, I won't read those out, um, you had those in front of you, so the second goal. So the second goal, as we as as we've asked, is to elevate the and focus on the needs of students with disability. First off, thinking about how do we decrease disproportionality in the percentage of students color who are placed in substantially separate programs, and as we heard. One of the speakers of public comments identified this is a problem that we've had for centuries and something that we have to address. And then also how we measure a student growth, and again. Uh, the strategies with focus on inclusion seats, inclusion practice in the district. And and other strategies that we'll use, so going in back into the conversation about continual improvement. As we develop a progress monitoring system, we'll be able to say, well, are we making progress for the goals? Or which one of these strategies are helping us and which are not, and that will lead to course constructions. And even more importantly, where is it working and where is it not? So you want third, the third goal, Ms. Sullivan? And then this is the 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 major task that superintendent has prepared us to think about in terms of returning, recovering, reimagining what we do as we grow with. Attending to health and social well-being. And and core to that is measuring progress in equitable literacy and understood as as foundational. To learning across the disciplines is is the degree to which we have students who are literate. And 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 working very, and we're implementing a new program to support that, and we'll be measuring that progress. And then the other is chronic absenteeism, looking at how we make sure that our students are engaged, and we we know we have significant problems. Uh, probably in the middle years with growing absenteeism and learning the equivalent, uh, the subsequent subsequent learning loss. And focusing on that is very important. And then the fifth. On goal, Ms. Sullivan, if you can move forward. Is is this is, this is, this is a challenge for us to think through and, you know, frankly, I think we have to. Um, I I encourage us to be very respectful of the superintendent's willingness to um uh open. Um. Her and her team up to essentially the opinions and values and perspectives of the people they serve by using. Uh, Gallup polls to capture school leader perception, so we understand. That improving the working relationship between the central office and the schools is central to our ability to move forward for all children. Understanding how the leaders look at central office is very critical. And particularly with a focus on district office perception, so that's the professional practice goal, which is a lot about bringing a diverse group of. Highly committed um and very thoughtful professionals uh and getting to all moving in the same direction. So with that, I open our, I open up the conversation to questions that anyone on the committee may have. And 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 to either me or the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Questions? Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. I'm trying to understand a little bit, uh, well, first let me just start by saying that I appreciate the, let's focus on. A small number. a small number of pieces that can have big impact so that we're not just focusing on on the fires. Um so I I definitely appreciate that um that perspective and that that plan. One of the pieces that I was looking at as I was looking through the slides is that um the strategies in some ways are also kind of mini miniature goals. But I'm wondering um if we are thinking of putting any sort of metrics within those strategies to actually see like how we're making progress? So for example, um with student learning goals, uh sorry, with the goal number one around English learners and one of the strategies being uh that the district increased seats into language programming, my question is, is there a target number of seats that we're looking to do that with? Or increasing the linguistic diversity of BPS staff members? What's the target goal there? And so I'm just trying to understand how the strategies listed are reconciled um with kind of a progress update um moving forward.
It's still unmuted, Dr. Coleman.
I was I was apologizing. Sorry, you know, you went went went. I I'm gonna give up. I'll never get this right. So keep kind of reminding me. I'm sorry about that. So, you know, I think you've, I I think you've answered and hit a very critical issue about are we measuring progress? Are we measuring acquisition of a particular standard? And I don't think we have a, I don't think we have that answer. So I think that's one of the things that we have to consider, both as a committee and in work with Dr. Casellius, about what's doable. So is it significant progress that we're measuring eve- or uh is there a criterion? I don't think we have an um um so I think that's part of our discussion that we need to think through as a committee about what we think is doable. And I think we have to, you know, um lean on uh Dr. Casellius and her team to probably propose uh uh ways in which uh both could be measured. You know, what would a progress look like and then what would a criterion reference look like? And is that and and if it's and would that be reasonable?
Thank you.
I think the other question, we often had the language often use, what are the leading indicators moving? And I think I I really appreciate you pointing out that there 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 are parts of a strategy that how much and and that should be reported and then tracked in terms of seeing if it's had any impact and the necessary impact. And maybe not, if we don't get the move we want, we have to do more, maybe more inclusion or may and not just to step um be satisfied with an initial um implementation.
Um Ms. LaPera, to be honest, it's really hard to pick targets um right now with the data that we have. Given the volatility of the MCAS scores and the access and the remote and not remote and all of that. And then looking back historically, if you look back the past five years prior to twenty nineteen and you look at what the growth was, like, I'm just not satisfied with what generally is the growth, right? And so we could put that in there and what what's been typical growth for uh, you know, Boston and then even put a little bit more of an ambition, ambitious goal on it, and it's still at thirty five percent of kids at proficient or something, you know? And then when you say, okay, I'm gonna be aspirational and, you know, do what I really want to do, which is like, all our kids are gonna make it, right? All our kids are gonna score it. And then you know that you're in a pandemic situation. You know, I wanna, you know, set them really high for ourselves, but I also know that we are still so much in this moment of the pandemic that I I think we gotta come back to you all with with what you think is realistic for what what you wanna hold me and the team accountable for. Uh maybe we can start that conversation next week and I can have you know, some of the uh data teams share with you some of the targets that we have on there. But, you know, when they shared them with me, you know, what would be typical, I wasn't satisfied. And so then it was like, what what becomes realistic then? You know, and we've never been in a pandemic before. We've never seen this type of learning loss before. And so I I just having a hard time with what would be appropriate to put on there without setting ourselves up, you know, but being aspirational enough. So I it's just, I I would love to have some time to discuss it with you guys next week.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I would imagine that if we're going just based off of typical performance or just typical growth, that we would likely all be unsatisfied with that being the goal. So appreciate the opportunity to just engage on what's realistic, what's aspirational, and also what's what's the immediate and then what's the long term? And what how do we get, how do we get to where we want to be three, five years from now, knowing that it's going to take um three, five, ten years from now? Knowing that it's gonna take time and effort and investment in in specific pieces.
Mr. O'Neill? Oh, oh, sorry, Dr. I not the.
No, 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 I I I got caught up in having a conversation with Mr. O'Neill, please.
Thank you. So a great conversation. Um first of all, well done. I like the approach of A tying it to the school committee goals and priorities. I always believe less is more and particularly in evaluation, if we're holding the the superintendent accountable for twenty five measures, you you just can't concentrate on that. So to pick four, you know, four overriding goals and two in each, I think is great. And it is very much aligned with the with the priorities the school committee picks. So I I think there's a lot of clarity to it. The only one I'm struggling with, and this is just, you know, to put it on the table, and the last one, I really appreciate that you're tying it to the Gallup data because, you know, at the time when the superintendent shared that with us, and of course, you know, we were hammered for, well, the data was low and I complimented you, superintendent, at the time for having the courage to have that report, particularly in the middle of a pandemic, or have that research. And I said at the time, the key thing is, you know, that in my experience and in my career is you face it head on and you pick out of those what you really need to work on and then you commit to it. And that's exactly what you have done here. So I'm really impressed that you picked a couple of of things in both for school leaders and then central office. A couple of the measures and that you want to improve off of that and you have strategies for it. What I'm wondering is, what I see missing from that, Dr. Coleman, and I love your thoughts on it, is, you know, we have school leaders and you have central office, but you don't have our families. You don't have our communities. And, you know, those are ultimately our customers, right? So how do we measure, when we talk at you on that, you have in the top line about customer service, which aligns with our strategic plan? But customer service implies you're getting feedback from our customers and and our customers are our families and our students. How do you get feedback from them? How do you measure that? And how do you have that as a goal? Which ties to all the work that the superintendent does for community engagement.
Both the friend and I are waiting for the other person to.
I forgot to turn mine off again. So I am happy, remember, we have all of the strategic plan goals that I'm also being held accountable to. So um we have two really important key goals in um and commitments in the strategic plan. That is one to cultivate trust. The other is to amplify voice. Those are two big, huge indicators. Um we do have family surveys and we will be presenting to you uh updates on all of the strategic planning as well. But I think what uh Dr. Coleman and I were trying to do, just like we've been doing with the school committee, is say, what are a few that we're gonna pull out of the larger strategic plan to really focus on? But that doesn't mean that we are not paying attention to the really important work of the strategic plan to cultivate trust and and amplify voice.
I understand that. I I having designed and having designed incentive plans in my corporate career, you know, you inspect what you expect. And people will be looking at what are the superintendent's goals? And so I think there is a measure of importance to including community voice or family voice or parental voice in there as a goal that we are holding the superintendent accountable for, to show that how we do value that. And again, I I know the trade off of, because it's very easy to nitpick on these, right? Say, well, just add this one more, just add this one more. I'm sensitive to that, but you know, the showing the importance of parental voice, you know, we have to walk the walk and not just talk the talk on it.
So, Mr. O'Neill, which one of the two, so we were looking at school leader perceptions and then perceptions of the central office? Would you be advocating that we add a third? Or would you trade off one of those two? Say, you know, which of those two are, do you think are the most critical for us to know, as you know, you know, inspect what you expect? And would you take one off and put on some met- metric, which would, as as Dr. Caselli says, we're already measuring it. So not, it's not like you're gonna add a new set of data collection, already getting that.
Uh, you know, to be honest with you, I think it is a three legged stool at school, a three legged stool. It's, what what are the perceptions of the school leaders? Because those are the folks in the field. What are the perceptions of central office? And then what are the perceptions of families or our customers, which are really parents and students? And those three together form the perception of the district overall. I just, I just throw it out for your consideration.
This is a great idea.
I'm I'm happy to add it. Um we didn't leave it out on purpose.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sure. I know you were making hard choices. I understand that.
So we will still work um on those things, but happy to add that goal in there. It's it's uh very important to me. And as you know, if you look at my calendar.
I know.
Spend a lot of time with our families. And so um I'm I'm happy to to add that.
Thank you. Just a thought for consideration, but thank you for this work overall.
I do think one thing about that, though, um when you get the family surveys, you will see that it will correlate probably with all of the other goals that we have as well. You know, if you're not, if you're not getting transportation on time or, you know, if, you know, school school leaders aren't happy, I mean, I think you're going to see that these these numbers would also triangulate and coordinate together. Other comments? If not, I want to say thank you um to Dr. Coleman. You answered many of my questions in the framing of this um report and um look forward superintendent and with the committee um to be able to talk a little bit more about this as we think through our structure um as we move forward with our retreat next week. So we look forward to taking actions on these goals at our next meeting. Now we'll move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have two speakers signed up for public comment on reports. Kathleen Shadavon and Sarah Grandfield. I don't see Kathleen signed into the meeting, so let's start with Sarah Green Grandfield.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Sarah Grandfield and I live in West Roxbury. Some of my comments tonight have been addressed but are worth reiterating, if only to indicate to this body that the public is still paying attention and holding you accountable. My comments relate to the exam school admissions simulations. So first, I wanted to say that I was shocked that Ms. Roberts and Mr. O'Neill both noted that the percentage of invitations extended to students attending non-bonus point schools is roughly equivalent to the percentage of students enrolled in sixth grade citywide. And they cited that as evidence that the policy is fair. They are wrong. The relevant comparison is not between invited students and all sixth graders in Boston. It is between invited students and applicants who have a B or higher GPA. That is to say, the population of students who are actually able to attend the exam schools. According to your own simulations, fully, one third of qualified applicants attend schools that do not qualify for bonus points. Under a fair and reasonable policy, that means that one third of invited students would attend such schools. However, again, according to your own simulations, only one fifth of invited students attend such schools. On that score, this policy is obviously not fair and Mr. O'Neill should take no comfort in that data. If any member of the school committee does not understand this distinction, please reach out to me and I will be happy to explain my point in detail. Secondly, what I've seen tonight actually does not assuage the concerns of many parents and those concerns expressed at last month's meeting, that certain BPS schools that are below the forty percent economically disadvantaged threshold will send almost no students who do not instead receive the fifteen bonus points for living in BHA or for being homeless or in DCF custody to some or all of the three exam schools. This point was articulated by Mr. Durajo, but I was surprised to hear Mr. O'Neill indicating comfort in the policy without any caveat in light of the fact that that highly relevant data was omitted. I think what the school committee and the public really need to see is a simple series of charts showing for each tier, the number of students invited from each BPS elementary school and from the other statistically significant private parochial and charter historical sending schools. This data should then be further broken down by invitations to each of the three exam schools based on historical application preferences. So we should see specific projections for BLS, BLA, and the O'Brien from each tier and each sending school. Additionally, for each of these categories, it should also be revealed what number of invited students received fifteen bonus points. I know that during the task force proceedings, BPS was able to provide simulations with these data points. And so I see no reason why they cannot do so now. I will follow up with a written comment outlining these requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um I believe that Kathleen has her hand raised, so we'll invite Kathleen Shadavon to testify.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Kathleen Shadavon, the resident of Charlestown and the parent of two BPS students. Thank you for sharing the simulations and thank you to the committee members for raising important questions and concerns about the process and the policy. I have several observations on what's been shared. Number one, at the June school committee meeting, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Craigor confirmed that the task force's charge was not to create a student body at the exam schools that matches the racial socioeconomic and geographic diversity of the city, but rather one that ensures those schools reap the educational benefits that flow from a diverse student body. Yet these simulations show that the policy is absolutely being measured on how closely the outcomes match the diversity in K through twelve. The word proportional was used at least a dozen times tonight. My second observation was effectively raised by Mr. De Arujo. How many of the two hundred and four simulated invitations to students at a non-bonus point school are in fact receiving fifteen bonus points due to their individual circumstances? Homelessness, DCF custody, BHI, BHA housing? If these simulations are meant to disprove the theory, if you do not get bonus points, you do not get in. They cannot do so without accounting for this group of students. We know fifty-three students who were in the homeless or DCF bucket were invited under zip code policy. And we know that ten percent of all BPS students are in BHA housing. Hiding the student group in the simulations does not fulfill the promise made by this body to rebuild trust and ensure transparency. Third, Ms. Robinson alluded to this point regarding applicant numbers. Both the simulations this evening and the zip code policy results ignored the applicants eligible for exam schools, but disadvantaged because of where they live or go to school. Let's compare West Roxbury and Brighton, which will receive roughly the same percentage of invitations. West Roxbury had a hundred and forty-six applicants last year. Brighton, just 47. This means, assuming roughly the same number of applicants, only 36% of applicants in West Roxbury will have access to exam schools versus 90% in Brighton. When you see these wild disparities and when BPS continues to hide applicant members, it suggests this is a policy about exclusion rather than inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for public comment on reports.
Thank you. Is there any new business? No, all right.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Ms. Robinson.
I'm sorry.
The uptake. I would like to put on new business and this is no rush per se. But, you know, as the first time I brought up a conversation about the grant approval, Mr. O'Neill, I remember his smile at me 10 years ago now. I would, I'm not sure the way we approve grants is, you know, focused or useful or necessary and not getting at all the questions that we need and maybe reflect a time when we had less trust in our budgetary controls. And so, I would like to take some time, have some time to think about if couples went together, noodle about a better way on talk of grants. But I'd like to bring up the new visitor or put on new business to have that discussion in a future meeting and then have the superintendent's team come back with a proposal, how better to manage that? You know, it seems like one of these things that we do that we're not, that I'm not sure what value added we have doing the way we're doing it. And is there a more useful way to do it? So, I'd like to put that on the docket.
Thank you. We will do that. And we can probably do that next week because the committee will be holding a two-day remote retreat on the evenings of October 12th and Wednesday, October 13th. The committee will use that time to plan our agendas for the 2021-22 school year and to discuss our meeting structure. The retreats will be open to the public and more information will be posted on the committee's webpage later this week. The next regular school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 27. And if there is nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, and have a good night, everyone.
Mr. De Arujo?
Yes, good night. Thank you.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes, buenas noches.
Ms. Belango Garcia?
Yes, buen night, buenas noches.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, good night.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, good night. Thank you, everyone, and see you on Tuesday.